To order at 6:00 PM. Yes, closed session, did I say? Everyone please stand for the page of allegiance. And I will start us off. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk, roll call please.
Yes, roll call is completed, all members are present.
Thank you. Participation is invited if you wish to be heard on any item on the agenda, including any item on the consent calendar. Please so indicate by filling out a speaker request card and hand it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Code of ethics, as your elected governing board, we will remember the code of ethics that we voluntarily in an embassy approved. During this meeting, we will treat each other and the public with patience, civility, and courtesy. The decisions made tonight will be for the benefit of the Varsho community and not for personal gain. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the governing board on matters on the closed session agenda and within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. City Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, we have one. Mr. Mike Hernandez speaking on item one, which is the conference with real property negotiators.
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. I'm just curious. The Lewis Group said that they're not developing, they're not building houses. So this thing of giving them the properties, strictly speculation, that hopefully they'll find somebody to build. I thought the council was trying to get people to actually build, not to deal with speculators. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. With that, I ask for a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Councilmember Noble. I call for the vote.
I'm waiting for one vote. Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. With that, we go into closed session. I do want to let the public know, we will do our best to be back at seven, as I promised. We are always going to try to start an open session at seven, but we do have a few items that have to be addressed prior to open session. Thank you.
We also met in closed session to consider three items. First, item three regarding anticipated litigation. A second public employee appointment regarding position title city manager. And third, existing litigation regarding the R. Perez workers comp case. On item three, the council provided direction of staff and council and took no reportable action. On item five, the council agreed in concept of the city manager's agreement, which is on open session as item number 19. Can only be approved in open session. And on item six, the council provided direction of staff and council and took no reportable action. Items one, two, and four may be taken up at the end of the open session meeting depending on how long we go or deferred to a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, and it is the direction that we'll go back in a closed session after open session. With that, I call this meeting to order at 7:09 PM for February 18th, 2025. Everyone, please stand. We will have an invocation by Pastor Bobby R. Branton from Gideon's.
Let us, let us pray. We welcome you Holy Spirit in Jesus' name. And we thank you Father God in Jesus' name for the city of Barstow. I thank you so much for allowing me to be born in this beautiful city. I thank you so much for this wonderful time with the people of Barstow. I thank you so much that you allowed us all to gather together to discuss, to conversate, and do, Lord God, your will. Like it says in your word, it says, "If the Lord does not build it, build the house, the builders build for nothing." And if the guard doesn't guard, if the Lord doesn't guard the ha- the city, then they're guarding and no- they're doing nothing. So we welcome you, Lord God, in this new year, in this new time, that you would bless the council, that you will bless the mayor, that you would be with them, Lord, that you give them peace, Lord God, and a clear mind, Lord God. Enforce all we ask you in Jesus' name to forgive us of our sins, Lord God. If we have turned away from you, Lord, we need your help. We need your guidance. We need your presence to lead us, Lord God. And in the name of Jesus, I declare prosperity over Barstow. In the name of Jesus, I declare, Lord God, new properties being given, Lord God, for new businesses, Lord God, for great success, Lord, for the city of Barstow, just for not this time, but for the children, Lord God, to see your glory and your honor of your name, King Jesus. So we welcome you, Lord. In name of Jesus Christ, Lord God, we welcome you. And I put your blood, Lord Jesus, on this place. We thank you, Father God. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Branton. With that, I call Ms. Barstow Elajio Massimini to lead us in our pledge.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Massimini. City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, roll call is completed and all members are present.
Thank you. Participation is invited. If you wish to be heard on any item on the agenda, indicate, indicate any item on the consent calendar. Please do so by any- by filling out a speaker request card and hand it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Our code of ethics, as your elected governing board, we will remember the code of ethics that we voluntarily and unanimously approved. During this meeting, we will treat each other and the public with patience, civility, and courtesy. The decisions made tonight will be for the benefit of the Barstow community and not for personal gain. Review and approval of the agenda. This is the time for members of the governing board to call for rearranging the order of the agenda, adding items or removing items from the agenda or removing items from the consent calendar for discussion and/or separate action. Items may only be added to the agenda allowed by state law, including government code section 54954.2 subdivision B, allowing emergency items to be added by majority vote and allowing items that arose to the city's attention after the agenda posting deadline, but which require immediate action, to be added by a two-thirds vote of the council members present at the meeting or, if less than two-thirds of the council members are present, the unanimous vote of those members present. I call for a motion for the agenda.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Rose, a second by Councilmember Noble to approve the agenda as presented.
I'm in the queue.
I don't have a queue here. Do you have a motion?
I would like to pull item 15.
Okay, I have a motion. You'll have to make a substitute motion, please.
So...
I have a motion and a second. If you want to pull 15, you'll have to make a substitute motion.
Okay, so I agree with the agenda item except for item to deleting, pulling item 15.
Mayor, if I may, I made the original motion. I'd like to change my motion to, to pull item number 15. I'll just need a second.
Thank you. Okay, I've got a motion on the agenda, pulling item 15. I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem and a second by Councilmember Noble. I call for the vote.
And the motion to approve the agenda pulling item 15 passes.
Okay, clarification, Councilwoman Hernandez, 15 was not consent. It was already in business action. You meant to put it in to business or to pull it from the agenda for tonight.
Yes, I would like it to be continued to the next meeting.
Okay, so it's, the motion then was to pull it from the agenda and so to table it really?
Pull it from the agenda entirely to table it, right?
I want it tabled, yes.
Okay, so the clarification, if I can get the motion, is to table number 15?
Yes, that's my request. I, I discussed it with staff and there was some missing information.
So I'm, Mayor, I just want to make sure that we're following the correct process. We had asked Councilwoman Hernandez to do a subsequent motion. I went ahead and changed my motion so that we could pull it, but then I realized that this is part of an action item.
All right.
So I am going to resend my motion to pull this item.
Okay.
Right.
Councilmember Noble, your second now is for to approve the agenda as presented? Okay, so the motion on the table is to approve the agenda as presented. Councilmember Hernandez, you would have to make a subsequent motion.
I want to make the subsequent motion of approving the agenda, but tabling item 15.
Okay, do I have a second on the subsequent motion?
He seconded.
Okay, I have a second on the subsequent motion. Subsequent motion is to approve the agenda to table number 15. And is, I will allow up to three motions. Is there a third? Okay.
I would like to go back to, would it be considered a subsequent motion on top of?
It would have to be a different motion. It cannot be the same as the first. Okay?
I would like to go ahead and allow it for it to remain on discussion so that we can discuss when the item comes out.
We have a motion. We have to vote on the subsequent motion, which would be to table number 15. I'll call for the vote. Subsequent motion fails. I'll call for the vote on the first motion, which is to approve the agenda as presented. We don't have the vote up.
And the motion to approve agenda passes for, for one no vote from Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Let me get back on schedule now. Okay, so we're going to go on to presentations. We have a certificate recognition for the Barstow Community Football and Cheer. Are those awards that we're giving out? Okay, I'm ask the council to please step to the front.
And as our mayor and council are making their way to the center, I'll begin calling the names of our Barstow Community Football and Cheer guests. I have Cassandra Hooker. I have cheer director DeeDee Krieger. Cheer A.D. Yvonne Lopez, Commissioner Nathan Hawkins. The Super Bowl winners, head coach Tiny Mike J.T. Fernandez, A.D. Tiny Mike Priscilla Fernandez, A.D. Tiny Mike Sissy Shoemake, head coach sophomore Nathaniel Stone, A.D. sophomore Jessica Aragon, head coach freshman John Hoffner, A.D. freshman Brandy Thompson, A.D. freshman Monique Crane. Cheer competition, head coach freshman Christina Crane, first place. Head coach Sophia, I'm sorry, sophomore Justina Krieger, first place, and head coach juniors Quintasha Johnson.
Okay, apparently Mrs. Krieger scheduled them for extra duty tonight, so. But why don't you tell us about these wonderful people?
I hate talking on these things. Football was amazing this year. I was in charge, of course, of cheer. So with that, we took all of our cheer teams to competition. We won three first place and one second place teams, so they really worked hard on those and they did a great job. Football, we had a lot of teams go to the Super Bowl, and I'm pretty sure all except for one team won the Super Bowl. So it was pretty amazing. We had awesome kids.
Thank you.
And as we continue our presentations, we have some more special guests tonight. And when I call your name, please make your way to the front, ladies. Little Queen Arabella Gaddy, Gotti, I'm sorry. Little Princess Iliana Rogers, junior queen Liv Lowe. Junior princess Asaya Savoy. Preteen queen Bailey Agari. Preteen princes Rosalie Maldonado. Preteen princes Brianna Simcoe. Teeny Supreme Emrin Lowe. Barstow Empress Madison Kane. Barstow Hostess Jenna Metzl. Teen princess Aleisha Goss. Teen princess Kylie Rose Johnston. Ms. Barstow Elajio Massimini. Ms. Princess Leila Gutierrez. Director DeeDee Krieger. Assistant Director Nikki Bourgeois. Event coordinator Danielle Agari. Event coordinator Victoria Salazar. Events assistant Selena Herrera. And event assistant Courtney Hewitt.
Okay, we asked for this. We said we want to really start recognizing all the good people, all the accomplishments in Barstow. So we have a few presentations tonight, and Mrs. Krieger is going to talk again. She did a better job of bringing this group in.
So this group of young ladies and their mothers have donated over 6,000 community service hours this year. So they're pretty busy. So they're doing anything from face painting to working craft tables and helping with anything they need to do, so. They're a really good group. Thank you.
Do you want us to squeeze in? Are we good? Thank you. Thank you.
We have one more presentation.
Oh, that's right, we do.
It's a certificate, certificate of appreciation for Mr. Rodney Brand.
Could I have Mr. Rodney Brand come up, please? Yes, please bring up your family. Mr. Brand just completed a term on our planning commission. We want to recognize him and thank him for his contributions and he still contributes to our community. I see him at many committee meetings and just trying to do the good things for the city of Barstow. Mr. Brand, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, it was, it was an honor to serve you guys, the community, and it was a rewarding experience seeing all the beneficial economic development at the planning commission that we did over the last four years. So I hope you guys as a council continue that because it's a pivotal moment right now for progress in Barstow. I really hope you guys keep the torch going and carry it bright. Thanks.
Thank you. Come on, Jacob. We'll let the room clear out. Okay, next we have an after-event report and presentation by Baby So Special.
I first of all want to thank the city for allowing Baby So Special to have the event Light Up the Night at the sports park. During the event, I realized, well, I worked with the school district and found out we have over 1,100 disabled children in our community, from severely disabled to on IEP with a learning disability. Even in Silver Valley, there's almost 500. So I was able to print up tickets and invite every single one of those children that have disabilities to come to Light Up the Night for free. I had a man named Dash come up from LA and he did a laser light show. It was an amazing event. We had, we had so much support. We had a lot of people attend and it was in honor of my son Caleb's 18th birthday. On the surface, every event that Baby So Special hosts is amazing and the turnout is always great. But it's the underneath part that really is frustrating and hard for me to continue to do what I do. I was promised help from the city with making sure we had enough electricity to to fuel the lasers. And then I wasn't getting phone calls back and it was really discouraging for me. It ended up costing Baby So Special $1,000 more because Dash had to bring his batteries up here. And it took a very long time to to pack them back away because it was thousands and thousands of pounds of batteries. So I think that maybe going forward, now that we have a new council and we have a new mayor, that we could really work together to continue to support, you know, these events, not just me, but everybody else that hosts the event here in Barstow. I think it's important. And I think Baby So Special has been in existence for 18 years. And I want to continue to do things for the disabled community. And I'm just asking if you guys could really just help support everything that we all do to try to make a difference and have great times and do great things here for for organizations and for different people that go unnoticed. It's really important. And the disabled community a lot of times goes unnoticed here. And so I just ask you for your support and thank you again for allowing us to have Light Up the Night at the sports park.
Thank you, Catherine. And you know, you can speak with me directly for this year's event if you need to.
Oh, one more. I'm not going to do Caleb's superhero when I did recently just lose my father. And so I just, I have to deal with all of that. So we're not going to do Caleb's superhero run, but we will do Light Up the Night in October.
Thank you. With that, we're going to go on to another after-event report. This is a presentation by GoGoBarstow. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. This is regarding the Together We Can Spirit of Giving. We want to let you know how amazing the event was. We want to thank Mayor Silva for coming out and being at the event and jumping in and moving tables and passing out water. If you didn't get to see, the line was down the road. Mayor Silva can attest that it was, the community needed that event. And it truly was not just Together We Can, Together We Did. Over 18 nonprofits came together. We gave out food. We gave out clothing. We gave out towels. We gave out dishes. We had families crying, getting brand-new fresh towels. A young lady crying. It was her first set of dishes that didn't come from a thrift store were brand-new that her family was going to get to eat on for Thanksgiving. Those little things make you humble yourselves. I think our only disappointment was we didn't see any city council member come and see that need in our community because it was a big need and we need to do that more often. We do lots of things and and give out lots of stuff, but those things that make a family feel whole at a holiday time was important. The blankets that folks needed. They didn't have or have the ability to heat their homes or sleeping in cars. People lined up at eight o'clock in the morning and we didn't start handing out stuff till one. But eight o'clock in the morning, they came with wagons. They went picking up neighbors to bring them to get in line. And every one of us, I could say, were in tears and emotional just at the pure fact that these people really needed this. They weren't being greedy. They weren't rowdy. We had that line in and out the door, but it felt like the event was never going to end and we ran out. And the other disappointment was that we asked for 3,000 from the city. We got 1,000. And we turned away about 50 families that we couldn't help. We ran out of gift cards. We ran out of food. We ran out of clothes. There was nothing that we left with. We didn't have to clean up anything besides picking up the tables and the chairs. And so I would like for the city to really consider being a co-host of Spirit of the Giving. Not just give us the gem, not say, here's a thousand dollar check, but be present and really show your constituents that you're there for them because they needed this. And we've heard nothing but nonstop people telling us that that was what the community needed. And it felt good being able to be one of those organizations among all the other ones who showed up, who gave. And I just ask you and I thank you for giving us the gem. And I don't know how we're going to fit them all in next year because we had organizations from San Bernardino calling us telling us this year to please reach out to them way early because they all want to be a part of this. So we're looking at December instead of Thanksgiving time because we continue to see lots of people giving away turkeys and hams at Thanksgiving even after that event. But no one was giving anything at December outside of toys. And toys are great for our kids, but families still need food and necessities outside of that. And so we would like to move that event to December, but we hope that the council will continue and and think about being there. And again, Mayor Silva, thank you for just jumping in and and helping because we needed every volunteer that was in that room. So Elizabeth, anything for you? Because she was the catalyst to help us do that. I think that's our only little piece was we had to find a nonprofit to help sponsor because AUSA already had an event. And because the city requires a nonprofit to put their name and we can only do one event a year, we struggled to find someone to step up. Luckily, Ms. Givens came up with her organization to do that. And she saved that event or else we would have been looking for somewhere to do or paying out of pocket just to give back to our community. So we ask that you consider looking at that. But thank you again for what you did for us. And again, Mayor Silva, we appreciate your support and you being there with us.
Thank you.
I only have one thing to say. I don't want GoGo to get the credit. It really goes to Ms. Renito Weeks, Martha Rochelle, team the AUSA. Like they're the ones who drove us to create Together We Can and brought the spirit of giving together. So thank you for, you know, recognizing GoGo, but really the the credit really goes to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to consent calendar. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the governing board on all matters on the consent calendar. Speakers are asked to limit their comments on all consent items to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests?
We do. We have one. Ms. Teresa Tank speaking on item 12, which is the ratification of accounts payable.
Welcome, Mrs. Tank.
I just have a few questions on some of these. December 20th, check number 98004 for Bark, refund of business license fees. Do we refund these to other vets or does the Humane Society get their fees also refunded? For January 17th, there is a check number 98193 for three invoices of 282898 for a mobile modular portable storage. And according to this, it says Animal Control Office Building. What happened to the Fort Irwin modulators that were free? Are we renting this mobile modular? And it looks like on two, 63966 was charged twice. So what is that for? And on January 31st, 98386, Bertec waste abatement cleanup for the building. Is this the cleanup and repair after Route 66 or is this just the cleanup of the facility? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all the comment we have on our consent calendar. And with that, I'll go ahead and read.
Yes.
Item 12 is the ratification of accounts payable expenditures. The recommended action is to approve and ratify expenses as audited for checks 97649 through 98436, And wires 1055, 1057 through 1085 totaling $1,387,522.06 per the agency breakdown. City, $15,593,129.85. Fire, $375,857.94 for a grand total of $15,968,987.79. Item 13 is the city of Barstow monthly update for February 2025. And the recommended action is a receive and file. And that is the end of the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Do I see any council members in the queue for questions? I don't have it up here, so let me know if you're in the queue. Councilmember Williams, go ahead.
I've got three pages of questions. I'm not going to do it in front of the audience. So I'm requesting a meeting with the intern city manager and the finance director as soon as possible to explain my three pages. And I'm not happy.
Okay. And again, I don't have the queue up here. Are there any other questions of staff on the consent calendar? Okay, ask for a motion.
So move to approve.
Are there any discussion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Protem Rose, second by Councilmember Noble. Call for the vote.
And the motion to approve consent passes five zero.
Okay, with that, we're going to move on to item number 14, reclassification of firefighters' position to salary grade 11480. The recommended action item. Staff recommends that the Barstow Fire Protection District Board approve the reclassification of firefighters' emergency medical technician EMT position to salary grade 11480, which is from 6,000 to 29.56 to 7,00950.67 per month and also see attachment B.
And Mayor, we had planned to have this discussion on this item in closed session before the open session discussion. Given the other closed session items, the council can defer this item to the next meeting or perhaps if the other items are fast enough, go in a closed session and then come back to open session on this item.
I understood that, but I didn't get a motion to to table this, so.
With that, we're having to discuss the item, but we defer to the council.
I've got it. Yeah, I've got to take it, but we may have to, yeah, just have discussion. I do have Mayor Protem Rose for questions.
So the question was, and I believe that Mr. Summers has clarified that, is that that we have not had a chance to discuss this prior to the open session. That was my question. So when it's time to move forward with the motion, I would like to make a motion. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, and I have no other council person with questions. Are there any requests to speak?
Yes, we have one. Mr. Mike Hernandez.
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. Is this going to be brought back at a later time is what I want to know because I wanted to hear the discussion, but since you're not going to have a discussion. That's my kind of question. Is it going to be discussed at a later time? Because I have a few questions on this thing, but I haven't heard any discussion concerning it. So my question is, are you going to bring it back for discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
We have no more on this item.
Okay. Have a question, Mayor Protem? Okay. Councilmember Hernandez, do you have a question?
Aren't we at discussion?
No, we would need a motion.
Because we haven't made a motion, correct?
All right, we'd need a motion and a second for it. We can motion for discussion. We don't have to put the item on the dais.
I would make a motion for discussion.
I have a motion for discussion by Councilmember Hernandez. Do I have a second? Seeing no second, is there a motion for can table?
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to defer this to the next council meeting for further discussion.
And I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion to table to the next council meeting by Mayor Protem Rose. I have a second by Councilmember Hernandez. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote.
And the motion to table this item to the next meeting passes five zero.
Okay, with that, we move on to number 15. This is first reading introduction of ordinance number. I don't have the number, okay, of the city of Barstow amending section 2.04.010 regarding the meeting time and place of the city council and adopt the resolution amending the previous established rules for the conduct of the city council meetings, proceedings, and business and repealing the city council resolution. So this was seconded by council last meeting to put this on here. Now I do want to let the council know that I added to move the meetings to Tuesday. That was done by me, not by staff. And the purpose for doing that is And the purpose for doing that is we run into a lot of holidays on Monday. And this would also give council a second day. The agendas would still come out prior week. It would give the council a second day to get information from staff. So with that, we will go to questions. But again, I remind you, this was put on by me. And I have Councilmember Hernandez in the queue. Questions?
Yes. I think you answered one of them. Why this item was brought before council for discussion with changes already made in attachments without a vote? This is happening again. This is not the first time. And why was it stated that the council requested change in agenda format and change of meeting day? I didn't request the changes and don't appreciate that impression be given without a discussion. My other is, what guarantee that we have that council members are reading the agendas in a timely manner, that the extra day will create change? And the rest I will leave a discussion. And I don't think there's that many Mondays. So I would have appreciated if you had said how many exact Mondays, holidays fall on that, because that's what I would like to know. Those are my questions.
I believe we had three or four. City manager, please help me out.
I believe there's around four to five holidays every year that fall on a Monday. And depending on Christmas, that rotates throughout the calendar.
At the minimum, Presidents' Day, Labor Day, Memorial Day are all statutorily on Mondays. Others vary with the years.
Okay.
So it's not, so my question is, I don't see that as that being as many. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay. With that, I have Councilmember Williams in the queue.
Is the school board meetings on Tuesday? Does anybody know? And, I mean, if I wanted to attend that, I couldn't if I'm doing it on a Tuesday, correct?
If the school board meetings are on Tuesday, then that would be correct. You'd be here.
Did we know that the school board meetings are on Tuesday?
I did not research other meetings, but if I can get an answer from Mayor Pro Tem Rose, she may know those dates.
Thank you. So the school board meetings are held on Tuesdays, but I'm trying to look it up because I thought it was the second and fourth.
I've just confirmed that if I could jump in. It is the second and fourth Tuesdays.
Yes. So it would not conflict with our meetings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Councilmember Williams? Okay. I have Mayor Pro Tem Rose in the queue.
Thank you. So my question would be that Tuesdays would give our city manager more time to meet with council members, because, is that correct? The assumption would be that we would give the city manager more time to meet with council members other than putting us all on a Monday, since we're closed on Fridays?
Yeah. Currently, the city hall is closed on Fridays, and the agenda is prepared. Usually, we have the agenda out Thursday evenings. Sometimes it rolls on to Friday whenever we get the agenda posted, depending on what last-minute items get brought in. So would moving it to Tuesday potentially award council members additional time to come speak to the city manager? Yes.
Well, so it would, so we would be, you would be able to, the city manager position would be more flexible in their calendar to say, okay, Mayor Pro Tem can, you know, come on Monday. Another council member can come on a Tuesday morning. So it would kind of give the staff members, if we had questions, to gather. It would give them a little more time to prepare for us as well, correct?
Correct. For note, you know, council member Noble works at Fort Irwin, doesn't get off till, or he doesn't get back into town until 5:30 majority of the time. So he would have the ability to come in on Monday evening and speak with the city manager if he, if he had, if he wanted to.
And I do have a question. So the format, and maybe I misunderstood Councilman Hernandez, but the format is that this is a recommendation for the whole council to vote, to consider. We do have the red line attached to this. So this is only, the red line will only take effect if we, in fact, approve this tonight, correct?
Yes. With a note that the meeting change is an ordinance, so it's introduction tonight, if introduced by the majority of, by the council, would adoption next time. And the other, the resolution shifting around the order would take effect tonight if adopted. And yes, it's up to the council, of course.
So did I just understand the order of the business would take effect tonight?
No, it would, because we've already published a ninth agenda. It would take effect with the next.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. That's all for my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Noble.
I had a question, but I believe it was answered when Councilmember Rose asked the question with our acting city manager. So I'm okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Shouldn't this went to the rules and policy before we brought this up to the council?
I'll take that. No. It was put on as allowed by procedures by the mayor. I have no more requests to speak. Do we have any public comment?
We do. Our first speaker is Mr. Ted Wisma.
Welcome, Mr. Wisma.
Thank you. Just minor things. You did move your general non-agenda public comment way up in the column as far as when they can talk, instead of being at the end of the evening. In general, I think that's a very good change. We'll see how it works out. One minor thing, though, is as you go through your fiction, your business items on the agenda, for me, it does bring up some questions that then I need to bring up under public comment. Not specific to that agenda item, but again, it brings up other issues in my mind. So sometimes going through the business first is helpful for me to make good public comment. The other thing is that I agree with Tuesday. I think that's a very useful change, because in need, there are many times Monday is a holiday. And I'm not sure that'll give you more time as a city manager, because it's a holiday. So city manager should be off on holiday as well. So I don't see that that's necessarily correct. The other thing is just a grammatical thing. Under item H, record of proceedings, very last line you have "in the discretion of the city manager", very last part of that. I think that should be "at the discretion of the city manager" grammatically. Like I said, minor change, but easy to do. My other thing is, you've got record of proceedings, all hearings. You don't define what your proceedings are. Is that everything you do? Is that all committees? And all hearings? Well, I didn't think committee meeting was a hearing, but I'd like to see some clarification on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wisma.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Hernandez.
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. You know, I find it strange that this is coming up. Tim, you've been on the council for 16 years, and you always made on a Monday. You attended 380 meetings during that timeframe. Now you say you want to move it to Tuesday. They moved it to Monday. I thought it would be good. Besides, three of the council people work, so they can't get time off, unless they're going to take time off their jobs to come in and talk to the city manager. They could always call the city manager if they had questions. Just like Tex said, he'd have a meeting and talk to the city manager and the finance director. But he has a job too, so he would have to take the time off, or they would have to set something up. My main question is, are you doing this for the benefit of the city or the benefit of yourself? So you can have more time? The city was open on Fridays. They decided to close it on Fridays. Now you have a four-day work week, so people, you can't get a hold of them. And if you could, you could actually speak to them, because you're supposed to go through the city manager, and the city manager is supposed to direct for somebody to answer your questions. That's the procedure. So does that mean you're going to change your procedure? You're going to let the city council talk to the individual people that they have questions with? I think Tex had a good idea. You should go to rules and policy. You have the discretion to change this, but are you changing it for what reason? Other than you can change it? And that's my concern. We've already had one mayor that did what he wanted to. Now we have two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
We have no more comment on this item.
Okay. With that, do I have any further questions from council? Mayor Pro Tem Rose, questions?
No questions. I'll keep, I'll stay in the queue for discussion, please.
Okay. So for clarification, Mr. Wisma brought it up, there are three changes. The first, changing the staff comments to after council comments. The second, moving the date. And the third, which Mr. Wisma brought up, is moving the public comment up to number eight on the agenda. So the motion does not have to be to approve as is. The motion can be to keep as is. The motion can be for one of the three. The motion could be for two of the three. So for clarification, if that's clear, I'll take a motion now. We can motion for approval as I described, or we can motion for discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept as is, as presented.
Okay. I have a motion.
Minor changes. So it's on page 152 that the, this is H. And thank you, Mr. Wisma, for bringing this up, that the word "in" at the very end of that, "in the discretion of the city manager" should be "at". That's at the very end of the H, on page 152 of the packet, or 15, well, 152.
Okay. And as long as we're changing it tonight, could you also include where it states on G that there's no limits on council comments? Because it is, you did priorly approve a six-minute limit. So we will strike that second line in G.
Yes. And I was going to bring that up. That is on G, that there, it stated that there was no limits on council comments. There is a limit, and it's stated in the, in the end of the sentence to six minutes. So we would need to strike no, that there is no limit. I also would like, these are little things. Mayor Pro Tem on page 148, Mayor Pro Tem should be capitalized. And I'm sure that, you know, by the time, if this is approved, that everything, that there'll be a lot of changes.
Okay. So I, so I have a motion to approve item 15 with the three changes and the grammar errors corrected. Do I have a second? I have a first by Mayor Pro Tem Rose. I have a second by Councilmember Noble. Go in discussion. I have Mayor Pro Tem Rose.
Thank you, Mayor. So have this gone to rules and policy? Because, yes, something can go to rules and policy, but the mayor does have the authority to add something to this agenda. And I want to commend our mayor, because this is forward-thinking. This is actually for the benefit of the city, absolutely for the benefit, because the more informed that this council is on items that are on this agenda, by being able to, A, if we're a working council member, we'll have to make the time during our break time and/or lunch hour to make the phone call to our city manager. We also have the option, because we took the oath to give 100% to take vacation time and come and speak to the city manager, or we can arrange after work. I can assure you that every city manager that I have worked with works 24/7. So even on a Friday, if we have a question, our city managers have always been very receptive. And had it gone to rules and policy, if that would have been the route, I would be recommending these changes as presented tonight. I also want to say that missing one Monday on critical business of our city is one too many Mondays. So I would not count one, two, three, or four. If we had to miss one Sunday, which we have, and we have had to wait a full month. We did that recently with the holidays that we didn't meet on the early January, and we waited almost a complete month. And our, the agenda was a lot bigger, and a lot of the business, you know, on the decisions we make came to a stop. So I really like the Tuesdays. And basically, that's what I'd like to say, is that, Mayor, I do commend you. Thank you for being forward-thinking. This is something that the former council had discussed during a short period of time. And I'm really glad that this, that this is in front of us, so that we can allow the staff and our city manager more time to answer questions that we may have versus crashing everything on a Monday or a Friday, when they're actually, you know, when the staff is not here. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Williams?
I still believe it should have went to rules and policies. I mean, that's my opinion. I do understand why this was done. I do understand that we need more time with the staff as well. But I didn't hear from staff, and I'd like to, I'd like to hear from them as well, to them agreeing to this. But with Monday Night Football and all the sports is going on, I get it, you know. Everybody, everybody wants to watch the games. But I still believe it should have went to rules and policy.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. First of all, I asked the city attorney when would it take effect?
So if the council were to approve it, first reading, the ordinance is tonight. Second reading would be March 3rd. As noted, an ordinance takes two votes. That would take effect 30 days later, which is April 2nd. That's the referendum period for any ordinance. So my expectation would be the first Tuesday meeting would be Tuesday, April 15th. We would have to sort out with the mayor, perhaps calling a special meeting sometime in the gap, because Monday, March has five Mondays, and April starts on a Tuesday. So we would, absent a special meeting, we'd be having a gap between March 17th and April 15th as a function of that 30-day window. My suggestion to the mayor would be to call a special meeting for the first Tuesday in April as well. But of course, I defer to that. But so, short answer, it takes effect if adopted, if adopted in the regular order, April 15th. And special meeting could be called to solve the meeting gap.
Okay. Thank you. This is my personal feelings regarding this situation. The previous council elected in 2020 continued to make changes to the agenda format. That is the reason the agenda currently has the present format. And I feel they attempted to do that to control public comment and damage control regarding the council image. Now, we are asked to make changes again to the agenda format when we're going back to where we were to begin with. And I'm in agreement that the public should have the opportunity to have that non-agenda at the beginning, because for the business items, they can take their three minutes and go be specific. But it always bothers me that it's worked for 30 years, right? I personally have never had problems getting information from staff in the 10 years I've been in council. I have followed protocol, meeting with the CM on a weekly basis, and made aware of issues and concerns. We usually know what's going to come on the agenda, because that is brought to us, you know, in prior meetings usually. As informed council members, we're aware of items such as accounts payable, and we made a big issue about that. And it wasn't the lack of meeting for the holiday that And it wasn't the lack of meeting for the holiday that created that situation. And as I recall, I don't think the agenda was that large on the meeting we did have. We also know that questions can lead to other questions. And as council members, we should share our concerns and questions to the city manager prior to meetings. But I've also noticed that sometimes council members may have different motivations for waiting to ask questions at meetings, instead of informing the city manager of their concerns. And I can understand, because the difference of opinions. So, I don't have a problem with that, you know? However you want to approach, to find out the information that's on the agenda has never been an issue to me. My concern was also that I have made appointments for doctors that I cannot change, that are on the Tuesdays, right? On the assumption that we meet on Mondays. I always take that into consideration. And we all know, whether it's Monday or Tuesday, council members have the time to ask questions before meetings. As Mayor Potem said, you know, no matter what hour, they aren't, you know, they have always answered, no matter who, you know, the city manager, only a problem was one. And when I ran for office, I understood the responsibilities and obligations that I was assuming, so I appreciate that Mayor Potem made note of that. So, whether my personal employment or commitments, I made an effort to plan my personal commitments around the committees I represent for the city. And if the mayor doesn't mind having a Tuesday meeting and then having, going down to the SBCTA on that Wednesday, because that, the same problem will happen. We will have the street committee, you know, on the Wednesday after the Tuesday meeting. So, as, as long as that does not interfere with the prior commitments that I have made personal, based on my understanding that Monday was our, our council meeting, and I agreed with Councilwoman Williams, I think it should have gone through rules and policy, even if that would have been the recommendation. But it also would have allowed the public, if they wanted, to make comments about that. And then, the fact that it has to be an ordinance, you know, and the city attorney explained the process for it, so it wasn't just a done deal, there's a process we have to go through. And for myself personally, I like the discussions and then the item to be brought back, you know, whether we're going to approve it or disapprove it at the next meeting, because I think that's fairer for the public to make comment and for us as council members to have those conversations. Because I have noted in the past that an item was brought, as if we were going to agree to it, without us having a discussion or a vote. And that was the change in the monthly meetings, and, you know, so I'm just saying, let's be open with the public. Let's be open with each other. We are a team. And that, I would appreciate a heads-up to know that that, you know, that that's the And that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Williams.
First of all, I don't think it's right to go back and say that the mayor is the same as the past mayor, or any other mayor back from that going on. I don't think that's right. He made a decision. It's his right with his authority to make that decision. It's our responsibility to make sure we're having discussion. That's what we're doing. I take a little offense to that. I don't, I don't appreciate it. I think he is being open. But you also have the Brown Act violation. He can't, he can't talk to all of us about it. So, you know, it, before we go out and start saying he's, you know, this Roman God, I don't think it's right. So, in my opinion, Mayor, if you want this, then, then I'm going to oblige it for you. But tack him for this is ridiculous.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Mayor Potem Rose.
Thank you. And I do want to say that, you know, that Councilman Williams did bring up such a critical aspect as to what we're bound by, and that's the Brown Act. You know, I was informed that the mayor brought this forward, seconded by Councilman Williams. And so, you know, I try not to talk to anybody in regards to agenda items unless somebody asks for a second, then I know that I can talk to one person. So, you know, going back to our commitment, we are, we are committed to give our best foot forward as council members. And when we receive this agenda item, any one of us is welcome to speak to the city manager, to say, you know, what is the reasoning for this? And I did, you know, in fact, you know, contact the city manager and asked him, and I, again, I can't say enough that I believe this is forward-thinking, and this is without a doubt in the best interest of the city and the city business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Councilmember Noble.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate, and, you know, I've listened to both sides of the story. And for me, just looking at the agenda and how it was wrote up, I had some questions about it. But in the long run, when you start talking about the holidays on a Monday and missing Monday Night Football and some other things that are going on out there, I think, I think Tuesday is a good move. And Tuesday frees up a lot of things to where we can meet with certain staff if we need to, or meet with the city manager if we should need to. There's things that's going to come on the agenda that we're going to need more time to do a little bit more homework on. And I think a little extra day here and there is going to help when it comes to the agenda items when we move forward. We got a lot of things coming up on the horizon that's going to require us to spend a lot more time in the agenda, figuring out who to talk to and talk to them in the sense of why we need to do the things that we need to do. So, I, I'm in favor. I think this is something that was talked about, about four or five years ago, that we needed to do, and we didn't do it because of certain things. And I think now is a good time to at least test the water and see if it works. If it doesn't, then we can bring it back before the council again. But I think the stuff that we did at previous meetings, it was a reason why we did certain things and had to change the agenda. But at the end, I thought it was a good move. And I think moving forward with this one, it's going to be a good move for the city and for the public. So, if we're going to do something, I think we all should be on the one accord when we do it. And I, I agree with the Councilmember Hernandez, that, you know, hey, there are certain things that we can talk about amongst each other, and there's things that we can't. But when it comes to agenda items and stuff, we need to keep that to ourselves. And once it comes before the council, it goes into a discussion, and that's what we can talk to amongst council. So, I'm okay with it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Noble. Mayor Potem Rose.
Thank you. This will be final for me on this. But I just want to reemphasize that, you know, does an extra day allow us, and how do we know that a council member is actually doing their homework? I have trust that each one of my peers here are doing their due diligence, and they're reading the agendas, and they're doing their homework. Because I believe that the more that we are informed on the issues in front of us, the stronger we are as a team, and the stronger we are as a city. So, whether we have three days turnaround or four days, I trust that each one of us up here, to include staff members, our city manager, everybody that's sitting here, as well as our attorney, that we are doing our due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Councilmember Hernandez.
I would still like to know the information on when it would become effective.
So, the first Tuesday meeting would be Tuesday, April 15th. Meetings between now and then would continue on the Mondays. As noted, it may make sense to call a special meeting.
So, that's when it would start?
Correct.
Okay.
But it may make sense to call a special meeting for Tuesday, April 1st. Otherwise, given the way the calendar works, there's a long gap.
Well, that, that's where I have a problem, because I have an appointment I cannot change within that time period. So, I'm all for teamwork. I understand your reasoning. I just needed to state my opinion. And Councilman Williams, I don't have an issue with you disagreeing, because that's how the council's supposed to work, right? We can agree to disagree. The only request I would have is, is I would prefer it start on the 15th, and that you had a Monday meeting on the 1st in April, and then I'm fine, because then it would cover the commitments that I have, the personal that I don't want to discuss, that I have to keep. On that basis, you know, I don't have a problem with that, because either way, I always do my homework, and I've always been able to have my conversations with the city manager, because I think that should be protocol. When a council person has a question, it should go to the city manager. And then if the city manager directs you, you know, to that staff person for more explanation, that's fine. As long as we all abide by the rules, I don't have any problem. So, that's the only request I would make, that you would have the April 1st meeting on a Monday, and then switch to a Tuesday on the 15th, and I'm fine with it, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. And I'll ask the maker of the motion to add that when we get to that point. Councilmember Williams.
Yeah, we're just going to support Councilwoman Hernandez on her prior commitment. That's important, to keep our commitments.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Mayor Potem Rose.
I'd like to go ahead and call for the question, and...
I wanted to speak.
Pardon?
I wanted to speak.
I'll resend that call for the question, and I, after you speak, I'll make, I'll make a motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Okay, as far as being open, I put this on the open agenda. It was not put into closed session, and we didn't come out with a new agenda coming out of closed session. As far as rules and policy, I asked the council to trust me. If I thought I was changing rules or policy, I would have asked this to go to rules and policy. I saw no change to rules or policy. I changed the order of the agenda. Does it benefit myself? Mr. Hernandez, you answered the question. 300 and something Mondays? I think that stands proof that I'm okay with Mondays. If the council decides to go Mondays, the only thing I'll guarantee is it probably won't be another 380 Mondays. So, as far as talking to staff, it would always be my direction to council, that they go through the city manager. I've made that very clear to them. Doesn't matter what day of the week we meet, they go to city manager to talk to staff. We will gain most of the time a Monday that's not a holiday. So, most of the time, we will have that extra Monday to talk to staff. They will be at City Hall. There will be three, four, or five Mondays where City Hall will be closed. But the majority, we will be open, and we gain that extra day for council to talk to staff. Attending SBCTA on the Wednesday after, they start at 10:00. That's almost midday for me by the time I get up, so that's no issue. And I would ask, I forgot who made the motion. Okay. I would ask that you add to your motion that we keep the first Monday of April and start the third Tuesday of April as when we start the Tuesdays, for the convenience of Councilmember Hernandez. I would have to have the same second, the original second?
So, Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and amend my motion to include that we would have the, the change would be a special meeting on April 7th, which is the first Monday in April, and then the next meeting would begin on April 22nd.
Okay.
And that doesn't make sense, because I'm looking at the calendar, because April, the very first day in April is a Tuesday. And it's the first and third Tuesday of the month. So, regardless, we would not be able to have an April Monday meeting. It would still, we would still be forced to have an April 1st meeting, which is a Tuesday, to stay within our first, third Tuesday. So, it would be April 1st and the 15th.
But the issue is the ordinance wouldn't take effect, because if it's adopted next time, it's adopted March 3rd, it doesn't take effect until 30 days later, given the referendum period. That's April 2nd, the day after the first Tuesday in April. So, my suggestion, if I could offer one, would be to proceed with the first Monday, April 7th is that special meeting, or perhaps, because March has five Mondays, special meeting set the first, the last Monday of March, March 31st, the day before the Tuesday, and that keeps the roughly two-week cadence. So, perhaps the special meeting is Monday, March 31st, and then our first regular Tuesday would be Tuesday, April 15th, and then the regular schedule from there.
Or what if we simplify it and start in May?
You can also defer it to start in May. That's fine, too. Because March gets weird with five Mondays.
Start in May.
Okay. So, I will, I will change my motion, so that, I will change my motion, so that if approved this evening, that the first Tuesday would be, this ordinance would be effective May 6th and moving forward.
Thank you. And who was the original second on that? Okay. And you, you agree? Okay. So, I have the first and the second. Councilmember Hernandez, are you in the queue, or did I forget to clear you?
I just want this clarified.
Okay. We're going to simplify it. We're going to go through April with Mondays. We will start Tuesdays in May. That's the motion.
God bless. I'm fine.
With that, I'll call for the vote.
And the motion to approve as presented with changes to the grammatical errors found and moving, or starting our meetings on the first Tuesday of May passes 5-0.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to call for a five-minute, we'll say eight-minute break, be back at Okay, item 16. Authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with California Office of Emergency Services for the purchase of an engine, 328 type 1 fire engine with equipment. The recommended action. Okay, there's no fiscal impact within fiscal year 2425 budget. The initiative, the initiative of 40,000 transaction with California Office of Emergency Services from account 225, 2.225, 225.06, 626, current balance of 80,000. And Fire Chief Cisneros, you're going to take this?
I do believe on behalf of Mr. Heldrich. So.
Acting City Manager, Mr. Heldrich, please.
I'll start it and then I'll let the Fire Chief get into more details that, about the, the fire engine. Mr., the Chief Cisneros brought, brought before us an option to, to purchase a fire engine that we currently have been maintaining for the last 10 years or so, and that fire engine is a part of the Cal OES system. The state has gone through to surplus some of these and replace some of these engines, and the, the current fire engine that is, that has been identified is the one for surplus is the one that is currently housed at the Barstow Fire District's garage up there. We utilize that engine whenever they go on strike team deployments, and that engine has been well-maintained by the city of Barstow's Fleet Department. And so Chief Cisneros is making the recommendation that we go ahead and acquire it. Cal OES is, provides every jurisdiction the opportunity to acquire their, their engines before they surplus them, and that's what the recommendation is before you. With that, I'll, I'll pass it over to the Chief Cisneros to give you more details on specifics of the fire engine itself.
Good evening, community council and city staff, as well as Mr. Mayor. So definitely bringing this forward to you guys is an opportunity for us to reinforce our, our reserve fleet for our fire district apparatus. This, as like, like Mr. Heldrich has stated, that we have actually been pretty intimate with this resource since it's been brand-new. It has been housed at Fire Station 361 at headquarters ever since we took possession of it approximately 10 to 12 years ago. This is a resource that has been part of the master mutual aid system and has been up and down the state as requested for numerous incidents of all risk issues as far as fires, floods, U.S.R. events, as well as prepositioned events for riots and so forth. Due to this opportunity, we have been able to purchase this apparatus fully equipped, 100% with all the apparatus and equipment, or actually all the equipment needed for it to be turnkey for us to put into service as either frontline if we decide to expand our operational deployment, but also to reinforce our reserve fleet as well. We have had intimate conversations with our fleet services and they actually support us in this endeavor and have recommended this due to their intimate knowledge of this apparatus. But with that being said, there's nothing further for me. Mr. Heldrich did hit all the highlights, but I am open to questions as needed.
Thank you. Do I have any questions from council? Councilmember Hernandez.
What account is this coming out of specifically?
So this account equivalent is 626 is what a part of our 225 fund. This is actually what we've gone mid-year without any use of our professional legal services fund, which we've had, set aside in this bucket of $80,000. What we've used, we've unexpend, we've had zero expenditure out of the account, so we've passed our mid-year accruals and reconciliation to where we could actually capitalize on this opportunity without any type of asking of additional funds from either special council requests or measure Q. So this is actually within budget of 2425.
And I want to congratulate you on being proactive. That's what we want to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hernandez, Councilman Noble.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
I was looking at the, the date of the vehicle as a 2007 with only 58,000 miles. Is that, how, what's the condition?
That, that's correct. You're looking at approximately 56,000 miles. Actually, it's probably a little bit more because we actually had surplus that in Sacramento. So it's currently waiting in queue for our decision up in Sacramento. So probably hit about 58,000 by the time we get back, depending on the mileage, and then keeping it in, kind of lying await for us on our opportunity. But it's in very good condition. Like I said, all our crews are very intimate with it. They've spent, I don't even know how, countless hours and days riding that thing up and from the Oregon border to, you know, the southern border of San Diego. So our crews are very intimate and there's no training. It could be turnkey, especially with our fleet services and their support. So we've looked at, we actually considered Montclair's, City of Montclair's OES, but they deemed that ours was in a lot better prep state. And just to give you an idea, our, our current reserve fleet, every reserve apparatus has up over 240, or correction, 140,000 miles and is of youth of about a 2002. So we're getting a little bit of a more youthful fleet with this acquisition, and it'll provide better for the community and reinforce our reserve fleet in lying await for our four-year turnaround on our brand-new apparatus.
Thank you, Councilmember Noble. Councilmember Williams.
What is the cost savings to us going this route than looking at anything else?
So cost savings as we.
Including the equipment on it.
The equipment, actually with it being 100% equipped, everybody that equipment at today's dollar would be about $150,000. So with us expending $40,000, a significant savings, as well as us getting a pumping apparatus included with that equipment. So it's kind of, hate to put a percentage to it, but it's a significant opportunity that a lot of agencies are actually doing a similar accrual and acquisition that we are.
So we will be tripling our, our money by buying this?
That's correct.
What's the oldest mileage vehicle you have in service right now?
So we have a 1995 E1, which is approximately 260,000 miles.
How many miles do you think you can get out of this one?
This one with the support, we could probably get another 100,000 miles out of, out of it to be within age limit and the use that we put into.
Well, you got one at 260. You can't squeeze 259?
We may be able to. We'll, we'll hopefully get that out of it.
So what will this do for the fire department morale and our firefighters to be able to get this vehicle?
It'll boost their morale as well because it helps support our existing reserve fleet, which is definitely aged and it's overextended in its life expectancy and, and its service life. So it'll give us some youthful resources, especially kind of bridging the gap on growth and waiting for our four-year turnaround on a brand-new apparatus as, as a turnaround as we've seen. So it's just going to parlay and bridge the gap to help get us through the next four years till we start getting our vehicle replacement plan and vehicle procurement plan in play.
What will that save us down the road for the plan for vehicles? I mean, what's a brand-new truck?
A brand-new truck? Well, there's a difference between a truck and a fire engine. The brand-new fire engine is about 1.2 to 1.5 million, and a brand-new fire truck is about 2.3 to 2.7 million equipped.
Where's the savings in this one between the two? Which one is it?
The fire engine?
Yeah, the 2.7 or the 2, or 1.2?
The 1.2.
1.2. So on top of that, the one, the 150K, which is the equipment on top of that?
That's correct.
What does it do for the service of the public? What, what does the public get out of having this truck?
Obviously, they're paying one-third the cost of what it would cost in order to us to procure that, just the equipment alone, which is all the nozzles, fittings, firehose, ladders, extrication equipment, urban search and rescue equipment, all the necessary items for us to complement a type 1 fire engine.
And this is going to keep the public even safer than they are right now with, with this truck?
That's correct.
Good job.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. See no other council members requesting to speak. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We have no comment.
With that, I'll call for a motion.
A second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez. I have a second by Councilmember Noble. Is there any discussion? Okay, I call for the vote.
And the motion on item 16 passes unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you. Item 17, we have dos casas New Mexico Chili Cookoff and Belen Fiesta. This is just a staff direction from council and who will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor, council. The, the item you have before you is, is open for discussion, and, and council members asked for this to be brought in front of us. The operator, the event coordinator, Mr. Roland, is here to, to be able to give an update or a brief description about the event if there's any questions for him. But the, I've been, I've been going back and forth with Roland for the last maybe a couple of weeks and discussions about the, the New Mexico Chili Cookoff. Council provided an allotment for this event of $3,000 when the event was first brought before them. And in, in addition to, we waived the fees associated with the event itself. And in those conversations with, with Roland, the, the amount, the, the event is in jeopardy based off the amount that the city has provided to them. So with that, Mr. Williams asked for this item to be brought before council to have further discussions, and the mayor gave the approval for that, so that's what you have before you tonight.
Thank you. Was there any questions from council of staff? Councilmember Williams.
Let's break down, first of all, we all recognize the Chili Cookoff as a great event. I want to break down a little more cost of what the city is giving out. I see that you have recreation time, everything else. What is the total amount of money? With the money we're giving him, what is the total cost to the city and the taxpayers?
Let me, I'll, I'll give you a little breakdown just so everyone's aware. The first, the first thing is, is that the city provided the event $3,000 in, in cash to be able to advertise and do whatever they needed to do. The fees in lieu of, which is parking wreck, having employees there to staff to, to help clean, to empty trash, to monitor the restrooms, clean the restrooms, those kinds of things. That's, that's one aspect, community development side, which is the fees, the permit fees, the inspections, all those kinds of things. Well, I was just going to give you the total.
Okay.
The police department, they also have officers that rotate through there. The event does have a beer garden, so the, the police department do, does provide like, basically during their shift, they provide people to go over there and monitor the situation. Public Works also will have employees over there routinely going through that. So approximately with, with all of the staff that would be there and the $3,000 that the city has gave in cash, it's approximately $13,000 total with fees waived and then also the, the rental of the park, all those things. And then $3,000 is the only thing that, is the, the cash that has been provided.
What is the vendors, are they paying for permits and is that a problem for the event holder?
So in previous years, yes, the, the vendors were all paying for business licenses. The city requires business licenses for, for anyone doing, conducting business. However, in the proposal that came before council, it was, our direction was, the way it was written was that all fees associated with the event were to be waived. So the vendors for, for the event itself, they do not have to pay for a business license for that event specifically.
They would have to pay, all food vendors would have to pay the county's permits to serve food if they don't, for their food handlers and everything else like that, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Separate.
Yeah, the county, we don't control the, the city does not control the, the food vendor.
Is that, is that cost would not have in the business license included, 13K or no?
Yes, that's, that includes everything. So if we, we, we based it off of 11 vendors because that's what the 2024 event was, 11 vendors and a $74 per vendor. So that, just waiving the business license fee is approximately 800. So that, just waiving the business license fee is approximately $814 that all his vendors had to pay in the previous years.
And we're giving him $3,000 in rev, taxpayers' money to be able to put the event on?
Correct. Council, council awarded this event $3,000.
Okay. Do we know what the total income for this event that brings in money for the event holder?
I, I'm not aware of what, what it generates for, for the event itself. For the city, I'm sure there's economic growth from having multiple, having vendors there, but then also having the traffic coming in from out of town, buying gas, potentially those kinds of things. But I don't know specifically what the vendor or the event coordinator makes.
Including hotels if they stay and everything else? I mean, it's, okay, thank you. I'll have more for discussion.
Mayor Potem Rose?
Thank you. So, so basically, we have $3,000 that we have agreed to pay in cash and then $10,000 plus dollars that we could say it's kind of soft money, but not soft money. Because we're still having to pay the, those employees and the equipment and everything for the services. Regardless if they're doing this event or that event, we're still paying that out, which is, which is hard dollar, but for this event, we would consider it soft money, correct?
Correct.
So 13,000. I do have a question for Mr. Yola.
Yes.
And sir-
I was gonna finish with questions of staff and I was gonna ask Mr. Yola to speak and then we'll have questions for him and, but go ahead.
Well, I, I have no problem following that protocol. I was looking, Mr. Heldrich, I was looking at the promotional fund application. And this amount requested that we're looking at is 5,000. Is this 5,000 above the 3,000 that we've already awarded?
I believe that this was his original application that was turned into the city council several months ago. And that's what was brought before the council for the community promotional fund. And the council chose to give, provide $3,000. So my understanding is, is that this, this application was the original application that was provided by the event.
The reason I'm asking is because I don't see an actual date for the application on the first and second page. So it was a little confusing.
My understanding, and I, I will try to confirm, but my understanding was is that this was brought before council as a packet with multiple other community promotional fund events. So there was multiple events that all came at one time and then council divvied up money based on, based on that.
So, so the application that we're looking at tonight is the original application. Part of the application would have been what other, that the, isn't it that part of the process is that any person that requests funds as such would have to also let us know what other income? Is income the right word? Or what other monies are, are they getting to support this event on their own?
My understanding of how the application process works is the applicant, or the event would fill out the application and they would put down a disclaimer of what their other revenue sources are or expenditures.
So this evening, we're just basically trying to confirm what, what other fees are related to this event.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Rose. And before I call the next councilperson, just for clarification, we're doing questions of staff. I am going to ask Mr. Yola to speak after we're done with staff and then council can ask questions. Since he is the applicant, we'll be able to ask him questions. Councilmember Williams?
Yes. Have we talked to, to the event holder about joining together or taking over the event and coordinating with the coordinator to be able to help support the event?
I have not personally spoken to him about the city being more involved in the event, but there has been discussions over the past several years that the event coordinator has, has brought, has mentioned that he believes the city should take a more hands-on approach. Him and the partner, him and his partner are, in his terms, they were getting older and they, they believed that they needed, they needed more support from either the city or somebody else helping to take the event over.
Would we be able to do a joint venture to cut the cost even more to help him if we, if we did it as a joint venture? If he, if they choose to?
If the direction of the council is to, to do a joint venture, the, the city would do a joint venture, yes.
If, if we agreed to, to help them with the application of the five instead of the three, do you have the money?
I do not have off the top of my head how much money is left in the promotional fund, but if you're adding $2,000, I would, I would assume that there's two, I would hope there's $2,000 in that account. But I don't, I'm not promising that.
I'll, I'll save my other comments for discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Noble.
Thank you, ma'am. Assistant City Manager, I was looking at the spreadsheet that we say that we have at least two officers doing overtime to support the event. Is that true? Just two?
Yeah, so what they, I'll let the chief speak for himself, but my understanding is, is that they have routine patrol also go through there, but then they have dedicated officers that, that attend the event.
So we have two that, that's on foot, that stays there.
That is correct. That is correct. Two officers would be assigned to the event, they're permitted there and then the patrol officers as calls and times present, permit, they would stop by as well.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I know at the last event, I seen multiple officers there, but you're saying two of them are fixed in that location and the other ones are just roving throughout and leaving out?
Correct.
Okay. And then when we talk about the public works, folks, those that are putting out chairs, tables and things of that nature, do they stay on station during that timeframe? Or they're doing other things throughout the city?
No, they would, they would be dedicated to this event. We would rotate because, because the event, I believe they, their estimated start time of, of like setup would be 6:00 AM. That they would start like setting up for the city side. And then some of that staff would go home and then other additional staff would come on to work the event itself to empty the trash and, and do those kinds of things.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Noble. I have no more requests to speak from council. Mr. Yola, you have a presentation as the applicant, please.
Thank you. The New Mexico Chili Cookoff was, we're in our 19th year. The issue's not money. That's not the issue here. But although I do think that this is woefully underpunded, the amounts of money they're giving to other people as opposed to this event, it's kind of embarrassing. You can spend $70,000 on fireworks. You can spend $25,000 on a parade, plus the big shindig at the end of the parade. And you can't fund this event. But that's not the issue. The issue is, before I say that, let me say this. This is a great event and we honor the people from Belen. We honor Mrs. Rose's family. We honor the mayor's family. These are the pioneers that came to Barstow, twenties, thirties, forties and fifties, over seven, 700 families. The issue's not money here. The issue is that we have done this for 19 years, we've never had a problem. We have to raise about $30,000. The city provides about 5% of that. We're providing a lot of advertising. And we have a lot of problems with your city's permit and code office. In fact, my team doesn't want to work with them anymore. There's been too much inconsistency from the city at this time. The last two years alone, we've had four city managers. And by the way, thank you, Chris. And I want to thank also Chief Espinoza. In the 19 years, he's the only one that's really come out and helped us, really helped us. So I want to thank you, Chris, and also chief. But, you know, what, what happens is when you change city managers like this, we lose three or four months. I've been trying to get this conversation, thank you, by the way, Mr. Williams, and thank you for putting this on the calendar. I've been trying to get this since November. You change city managers, you run one out, you bring another one in, four, four. How, how, we rely on these people to consult with them, get some guidance from them. And I'm, I'm really like up to here with this. I can give you a list of the problems we've had with your code enforcement. Just, I mean, making up rules? Porta potties were demanded? Really? The Hispanic community can't use the toilets? That is brazen, blatant racial discrimination. And you think that's okay? We have to pay for that? Trash cans, we have to pay for that? We have told, we have been told by the code the night before the event, if we didn't come down and pay them their mordida, their bite for the trash cans, they weren't going to permit this event. This is coming from your office over there that you had a, a head person over there for 20 years, Mary Wilbon. We're asking for her removal. This issue is not just the money, although you can't do better than that. We've asked for the 25,000 from the marijuana fund. You shined us on. So I'm here, but I'm telling you that we are not going to present the 19th annual New Mexico Chili Cookoff in April. We're not going to do this. And I've, I've, I can explain to you a number of different reasons. We had an event or we had a situation with your code person in April, 2022, I think this comes from that. They sent two inspectors plus two combat-ready Barstow police officers to raid a well-known business person's establishment, suggesting the absurdity that the well-known businessman was selling weed on the premises. They spent $10,000, the city's money, two combat-ready police officers armed with long rifles and two agents of Mary Wilborn. One of those agents, by the way, who she sent over, was married to the local representative of the highway stations. So they, the real intent here was to put us out of business and they did. The event we were having, they came in, they barged in with no, no probable cause at all. They didn't cite anybody. What an embarrassing event. The owner said they did this to embarrass me. Really? A pillar of the community. And that's what I'm dealing with. You make the rules up at top, the staff doesn't follow these rules. We've had two assurances at least, it may be three, that the bathrooms would be open for the public. We get there, surprise! Really? I mean, we get there one time and caca's all over the field. Caca's everywhere, human caca. Really? Then, then it doesn't stop there. In the last two years, you, the city, scheduled an event in competition with the New Mexico Chili Cookoff. We can't get vendors. You need some big changes in your code department. They run the show. You don't run the show. They don't, they, they, whether they're going to agree or, or follow the orders of the city manager is a mystery. I've asked them to put this in writing, they refused. But yet, the application, they make you put that in writing. It's, it's just gone on too long. And again, I'm making that announcement. We will not do this event this year. This raid, by the way, on this establishment, we don't even think the chief ever knew about it. We think it was a setup. They brought, I mean, it's just amazing. We were giving free tacos away. They, when the police arrived with the agents from code, the place cleared out and 15, 20 people, gone. We lost thousands of dollars. The merchant lost thousands of dollars. They make up rules as they go along. You want to hear the great one? The last rule they made up? They said, Ms. Wilbon said, that they are going to require business licenses from the entertainers. Are you serious? So, so if Kendrick Lamar didn't have a business license at the Super Bowl, they wouldn't let him entertain? That's where we're going with this. And they're just making stuff up. They lie? I have no confidence in the integrity of that office. I can't do business with people that I don't trust. So it's not just the money, although the money is woefully short. It costs us $30,000 to fill this event. We have never, ever, ever failed to provide this event to the city. Rain, sleet, snow, caca? We're there. And the city, they pay 5% of this. I don't know where, Chris, you're getting the 15,000, but I know one thing, that the $3,000 that we're given in kind, you're telling me it doesn't include the toilets? Latino people have to go do their thing in the bushes? No, we're way beyond that. That high cotton thing, we're way beyond that. So that's our position.
Thank you, Mr. Yola. I have requests to speak. Councilmember Williams, or questions?
Yeah, I got, got some questions now. Mr. Yola, you just said right now we're waiving all those fees and permits for them, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's where I, I'll show you the breakdown, but that's where I came up with, or that's where they came up with $10,000 and, and it's the fees, it's the staff, it's, it's, it's all those that's associated with what the city would do.
Those have never been waived.
No, 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 I'm talking about this year is what they're saying that we are going to waive.
We're a day late and a dollar short.
Yeah, previous years, the city did not waive those fees and this year we, we have presented to waive them.
And did we, did we solve this problem with code enforcement as well?
I, I'd have to ask what the details are about the specific situation for the one that he's referring to. I just, I've heard about it, but I don't know the details about it.
In '22, he said that this was where the, came down with the police officers for the weed, but did we have the Chili Cookoff in '23 and '24?
Yeah, yes.
So '22 couldn't affect it '23 and '24? I mean, I understand why he's upset, but I want to be accurate and transparent with, transparent with the people, that we did have '23 and '24 Chili Cookoff. And '22 issued, couldn't affect it that much, else we wouldn't have had it. Correct?
I can't speak for what exactly it is, but there, the event was held on '22, '23 and '24.
Okay, so this $25,000 for the parade, let's, let's get this out in the open right now. Has the city ever given the, the parade folks $25,000 in a check?
No. And, and what, what I was referring to about the $10,000 of, it's called in fee, in, in lieu of, which is the staff time, same thing with the Kiwanis Parade.
Okay.
And what, what you have is, is you have the police, the entire police department works that, that night. And so all the overtime and, and costs associated with that, we, we show the council what they're going to be donating to that event. Same thing with this one.
Do you give any, any cash to the Kiwanis Club to do the parade?
No.
Not, not one dime?
No.
Okay. I believe in the Chili Cookoff. I think it's important. But I want to make sure that we also are being transparent with the people and making sure that we're, we're good on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Mayor Potem Rose?
Thank you. So, so obviously this event, it saddens me that it's not going to happen.
It makes me sad too.
But my question would be to you, Mr. Yola, because I, I think that right now, because we know that it's going to be canceled, that we probably should end this discussion. It's important to have it, but my question to you is, you know, we can all be better, do better. And would you be open to having a partnership with the city so that we can help at a more partnership level to make this event happen? Because who, who we're hurting is, is the community. Because this is one of the largest events in our community that brings a large crowd out. And it, yes, it does cultivate the heritage from Belen, New Mexico to Barstow. Many families, you know, moved from there to here and that's the roots. Would you be willing to sit down and have a discussion with our new city manager and our mayor and anybody else that needs to be at that table to have a partnership to move this forward in future? to move this forward in future? Because I do believe that if we had a bigger partnership, we should be providing, you know, the in-kind services of the, of the bathrooms. We should be providing other stuff. But would you be willing to do that?
If you make the changes that I've addressed in your code and permit office, we'd be willing to discuss this. But if it's going to be continuing the same thing, the same dictator that's operating that office that no one seems to have any supervision over.
Well, we are going to, we are getting a new city manager. And as long as you're willing to meet at the table, I think that that would be a great start.
Now, let me say this, Councilman. All our windows have closed. Promotion windows closed, booking the agents, booking the talent has closed. I mean, everything's, we, we've talked to the city, we've warned the city about, not warned them, we've let them know for three months.
Well, I, I'm sad to hear that. But in saying that, Mr. Mayor, I think that we should probably end the discussion and move on, since this is at a new point now.
Motion to end discussion?
Yes, sir.
Second? Okay, I've got a first by Mayor Potem, second by Councilmember Hernandez to, to end this discussion. Vote please. Are any discussion? Vote.
And the motion to end discussion passes by zero.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Agenda Item 18. We're going to move on to Marriott presentation regarding the payment to the Marriott. This is no action item. It's a receive and file. And who will be taking this, Mr. City Manager?
This one's going to be our Finance Director, Ms. Harris, and then City Attorney, Mr. Summers, will add some points here and there.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and residents. So I've been asked to come back to council to present the, basically, the status quo on the Marriott agreement and the TOT reimbursements. The Marriott agreement received, or I'm sorry, the Marriott hotels received their certificate of occupancy late October 20, I believe it was the 25th of October in 2023. TOT, which is the transient occupancy tax, is, is reimbursed on a quarterly basis from all hotels in the city of Barstow. With that being said, each hotel has the responsibility to have their reimbursements into the office by the, the close of business at the end of the quarterly period, which ends in December for quarter two, I believe, which would have been the first period that the Marriott agreement had to submit their TOT reimbursements. When we receive this information from the hotels, we receive a packet that calculates the total number of residents that stay in the hotel for that three-month period, with the amount of rate that was charged. And it's calculated out what the percentage of sales tax would be for the city, and it's received with payment at that time. We are not entitled to the information of who is staying at that hotel alongside with the waiver information of the residents that stay in the hotel that are exempt from paying tax. So we have government officials and things of that nature that the hotel can use their status to not pay the tax for that period of time. So those waivers are included with the reimbursement. So we receive quarterly reimbursement submissions with a summary total of how many residents were in there, a total number, basically a headcount of the number of residents, the rate that was paid, and a check for that submission. This particular agreement started at the, with the certificate of occupancy in October, and their first close of period was December 31st, which we received a TOT submission in that period. I believe it was approximately $50,000 in that first period. Over the, over the remaining part of their first year, the hotel was successful in remitting over the $480,000, which was the true-up submission that was due back to the hotel as far as the reimbursement agreement. The first year, we received $489,000 and change from the hotel. So after the true-up was completed, we received $9,000, $9,410 for the first year of the Marriott agreement. So that being said, that's the end of year one. We still have four years remaining of this agreement. And we are approximately, we are just in quarter one of the year two of this period. So we still have a ways to go. If there are any specific questions regarding this agreement, I am open for questions.
Okay, I believe the, the attorney was going to speak, and then we'll go to questions.
Yeah, I'll add one or two more points. One is, staff have already talked about making sure that we, along with every other hotel in town, are robust in auditing those figures through our third-party auditors. We typically put the hotels on a schedule, and so we'll be robust in that process as well. The agreement and existing law entitle us to open the, crack open the hotel's books to verify that the checks they're giving us are accurate. And so that's in process as well. The other component is, I understand questions have been raised, if it were kicked, the concern has been posed, well, they started in part of a month, so how can they get the full credit for the month? The answer is, the $489,000 in the year exceeded the 480. It's not trued up monthly, it's trued up in the end on an annual basis, under the agreement approved by the prior council. So 489 for the year, the fact that if you pushed it a month, the most recent month, that would have kicked it into the next month, setting aside the quarter, the fact that the reporting is quarterly, not monthly, that month more than exceeded the 480 divided by 12, $40,000 a month. So they would have netted the same. The, but as noted, the outcome on net, collections for the first year, $489,000 and change, rebate back, $480,000, net to the city, $9,000 and change. Available for any other questions. Thank you.
Okay, do I have any questions from Council of Staff? Councilmember Williams?
Did I understand you correctly that it's the amount we agreed to pay them for the year is why we paid them that extra money, according to one of the residents that was concerned with that?
So, so we only reimbursed back to the hotel what we were paid during the course of the remittance over the quarters. So we did not remit to them anything that was not received from the agreement.
So the claim of $62,000 we paid extra is not?
That, it was not extra, no. That was part of the reimbursement that was paid to our city.
I think I better leave the rest of it alone.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Hernandez?
So if I'm to understand correctly, the contract basically was for the year and not the individual period, the way it was understood by the public?
It's a monthly reimbursement, but an annual true-up, and then a five-year mark is the total. So it's annually trued up. So if one month is low, another month is high, the high month over, offsets the low month, trued up annually, 480, $480,000 per year for the five years.
And like Mr. Williams, I declined to, having said whatever I had to say at the time that I didn't think it was, we would get any money in it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Seeing no other council members in the queue, do we have any public comment?
We do. Our first speaker is Ms. Marsha Weisma. Our second one is Mr. Mike Hernandez.
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you. You mean to say that they didn't pay for the month of October, and we're subsidizing them and giving them the $40,000? And that's okay? Because they didn't pay anything in the month of October. They paid for November and December. And I gave you the spreadsheet to where it was on, that I got from your Finance Director, that showed they paid no money in October. Their surplus they had was because of the 11 months. And according to the contract, they're supposed to get back $40,000 a month. So how can you give them $40,000 back for October when they never paid into October? That doesn't make sense. And for you to say that it's okay, I think it's wrong. It's a gift of public funds. I can understand if they paid October and you gave them back the $40,000, or even if they had short. But they didn't claim anything for October. They were open the 25th, but they paid no bed tax for the whole month. Yet you want to give them back $40,000 when they weren't even open? That doesn't make any sense. That's not logical. According to the contract, they were supposed to get back $40,000 a month. But they had to pay into it to get it back. They didn't pay into it in October. So why are you giving it back to them? Yeah, they did raise $60,000 surplus. But that's because that was over 11-month period. But you're technically giving them $40,000 of public funds when they did not contribute that. That is not right. And I don't see how anybody in logical sense could say that it's okay to do it. Is it $40,000 a month you give them, and then you settle up at the end of the year, but they got to pay into it? But if they're not paying into it, why are you giving it to them? Why are you giving them taxpayers' money when they're not entitled to it? It was bad enough that we got screwed by them for this contract. But now you want to add insult to the screwing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
We have no more comment on this item.
Okay, do I have any more questions from staff, or of staff? Question? Councilmember Williams, questions of staff?
Can we answer his question?
I believe we already have.
Are you saying that because it's, what, the question now is, did they bring any revenue in on that month that he's talking about? And if they didn't bring any revenue, did we pay him that $40,000 for that month?
They were open for the month of October, albeit in part, only from the 25th on. And for that partial month when trued up for the year, they collected more than $480,000. So we owe them, I don't have the, by the day figures, I don't know what they collected each day. But for the year, they collected more than 480, they collected $489,000. So the true-up kicks in, and we owe them the $480,000 rebate back, earning the 9,000, not earning, but collecting the 9,000.
The yearly, the yearly agreement is also involved with the monthly payments. And because of the yearly maximum pay, that's why, that's why.
Correct. The yearly true-up is what controls.
I appreciate your answer.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Hernandez?
I think the mistake was in the way the contract was written, and I hope that's not repeated in the future.
I highly doubt that.
Because that, that wasn't the understanding that, that we had. I understand your saying about the true-up, and I, but I think there should have been a better way of, and that in the future, we don't.
That's right, Hernandez, it's still time for questions. I promise you, we'll go to discussion.
Well, that, my question is, why did we do the contract that way? How about that?
Thank you for your question.
The prior council approved the contract. The true-up was in what was approved. But I would note, I suspect the world has shifted that we will never do another TOT rebate deal with the current council. But I, of course, defer to the majority at that time.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez.
If I could add one more point, Mayor.
Yes.
Since the approval of this contract in 2021, staff has been approached by several punitive hoteliers, asking for another TOT rebate deal. And every time, staff has told them, no. We will not bring that forward to council. Good luck on your own.
Thank you. I see no more requests to speak. This was a receive and file only. So on a better note, we will move on to Item 19, Approval of Resolution of Appointment of Rochelle Clayton as City Manager, Fire Protection District Manager, Odessa Water District Manager, and Successor Agency Manager, and Approval of At-Will Employment Agreement. The recommended action is that the city council, fire protection district board of directors, water district board of directors, and successor agency board of directors are recommended to each formally appoint Ms. Clayton as City Manager, Fire Protection District Manager, Odessa Water District Manager, and Successor Agency Executive Director by appointing, by adopting the attached resolution of appointment and approving the attached employment agreement. Mrs. Clayton's start date will be March 10, 2025.
And I'm going to give this report, Mr. Mayor. So on this one, the city council, as we know, began an extensive recruitment for a new city manager back in December, interviewed about a dozen, I'm sorry, a dozen applicants, and interviewed several finalists, and was unanimous in the selection of Rochelle Clayton as our next city manager if the contract is approved. The interview process included council interviews and community panelists. Ms. Clayton has been providing executive management services to local governments for the past 30 years, including 17 years with San Bernardino County, and most recent service as interim city manager for the city of San Bernardino, and previously, a number of years' service with the city of Menifee and the city of Banning. She has a particular expertise in finance and local government administration, with a Bachelor's of Science in Business Administration, and is looking forward very much to joining the Barstow community. She's also been present for our meeting, and I think had a chance to meet some folks at the breaks and before the meeting. As required by state law, I'll note a couple points of the agreement. It provides for an annual salary of $274,000 with a 5% deferred compensation element on top, vacation leave of 176 hours, sick leave of 104 hours, admin leave of 90 hours, which are standard for city managers. The other benefits are the same as the members of the Unit 6 Management Association, although as city manager, of course, is not in the union. It provides for a six-month severance if this council were to terminate not for cause, no severance if terminated for cause, and it does not include a car allowance. There is no car allowance. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to handle this, is I will go to questions from council, then we will go to public comment. And after that, I'm going to ask Ms. Clayton to please step up and introduce herself to our community. I have a request to speak by Councilmember Hernandez.
Why so many titles? This is the first time I've ever seen that on a city manager contract.
Oh, so, yeah.
I just want to know why.
Just to formalize the appointment for the other boards and commissions, the other hats the council wears. It was baked into some of the prior agreements, but maybe not front and center of the resolution.
Yeah, and I hadn't seen it. So I was, the first time, and I said, well, the CM is in charge of all that.
And it's just formalizing that, given the separate, the technically separate agencies. But there's no added compensation. It's one job with several hats.
No, no, I understood. But that just threw me, and I went, okay, I'm going to ask why. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Williams?
Personally, I like all the extra jobs and work for the money she's getting paid. Can you give us the range of salaries through the high-desert city managers throughout the community? Because I heard people say, or make a gesture on her pay.
I can, but give me a moment to click that up. I've got a chart, I just have to get it up.
The reason I'm asking that is you'll be surprised at what the rest of the cities are paying.
Did you have a second question while he's pulling that up?
The second question is, will she be moving to Barstow, or is she in that 60-mile range? Does that apply to her?
So the agreement provides that she'll live within a 60-minutes, approximately, response time to the city. I would defer to Ms. Clayton if she's planning to relocate her present resident. I believe currently she lives within that range.
Okay, that, at least she lives in that range, what, what we're requesting.
And, okay, so the range of, I just had it up. Give me another moment.
So the, the next question for staff is, I do believe the mayor's, or the, the city attorney said it was anonymous, when he said that the decision to make that choice, am I correct? Did you, did you say it was anonymous?
Yeah, it was unanimous by the council.
Yeah. So would tell you that we all liked that person, and we felt that it was the right, the right deal to do. I, I remember the numbers, if you want me to just shoot If you want me just to shoot them off the top of my head.
If you've got them handy, I'm remembering hard. I'm getting to pull up. You may have them right up front.
Go ahead. Answer your own question, Counselmember Williams.
Okay. I'm used to doing that. I do believe Hisperia was $307,000 for a city manager. Ranges from what they're making throughout the high desert is in your 320 all the way down, and I want to say that we got a deal. And you can think it's not a deal, but you have to understand the expertise we're getting, the qualifications we're getting versus what the other ones are out there paying. But so...
Answer the question, and we'll get to discussion.
So I can just add to that. So our main high desert cities, Adelanto, 260; Apple Valley, 299; Hisperia, 264; Victorville, 346, and change. So if you're looking at, you know, that puts us in the low end of that range relative to the others in the high desert.
Absolutely. So San Bernardino is probably 300-plus range, because I was wrong.
I would think San Bernardino is at least 300-something.
So I'll stand corrected on the Hisperia number, and I meant that to be against for San Bernardino. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselmember Williams. I have no more requests to speak by council. Do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker is Mr. Ted Weisma.
Welcome, Mr. Weisma.
Thank you. First of all, congratulations. You made a decision. My God, I'm getting tired of seeing city manager on that list of agenda, closed session three or four different times. Get tired of seeing that. That's all it said. So congratulations on making a decision. And I'd like to go over the contract, employment agreement. First of all, item two, terms of employment. Man, I can't believe anybody would sign this, honestly, but it sure gives you guys a lot of power. Says that the pleasure of the city council and on an at-will basis has no vested right in her employment. Wow. That's pretty strong. I guess that's based on some problems we had in the past. Let's move to item seven. Item seven. It talks about 6.8 hours of vacation leave per pay period. Is that per pay period every two weeks, or is that a monthly basis? Wasn't sure to me what the pay period was. I think it's every two weeks, so double that and per month, right? Item number 11A. Let's see. Talks about having the evaluations, and it says she'll be the city manager's responsibility to initiate these performance reviews. I really think that should be the council, not the city manager, that identifies when they're going to do a review. Item 14B. One minute, all right. The city attorney already said that $274,000 of pay and her golden parachute would be six months or half that if she's dismissed. That's a pretty good golden parachute. Like seeing that in there in general, but that's a lot of bucks. That's $107,000 golden parachute if the person just leaves. My goodness, I wish I got that. Okay. Item 19. Let's get back to that. 12 seconds. I guess I'm not going to have time. Just talks about amendments at the end. Should he change his clause in there?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weisma.
Our next speaker is Ms. Marshall Weisma.
Welcome, Mrs. Weisma.
Thank you. Hey, congratulations, each and every one of you. You finally made a decision. Wow. And we are so happy. But you kept us in the mud, not letting us know anything. Matthew, thank you for explaining the process. Sydney, thank you. And I believe it was Chris or Tex that explained some of it. People ask, we were kind of slammed down, put in the mud again. My one question is, you've already indicated there were two different boards. I would like to know if you could answer this. And I was told to direct it directly to you, Mr. Silva, so you may not want to answer it in public. You can address it publicly, or if you cannot address it publicly, address it to me privately. If there were two boards and two sets of questions for our wonderful candidate, were all of our people on the boards in city limits? And I am so glad that we have a woman here. We need some more women to run your men and run the show. Thank you for coming.
Our final speaker on this item is Mr. Mike Hernandez.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mrs. Weisma.
Thank you, sir. You know, Tex, when you're making a comparison, it would be nice if you made comparisons in an area where the populations are the same, because Apple Valley and all those other areas have three or four times our population. And it would be better that you do it to an area that's the same. I'm glad you have a new city manager. Whoever it is, I wish them luck, because you got a lot of work, especially in financing. And that's about it, you know? I wish you luck.
Thank you. And before we go back to council questions, I'm going to ask Ms. Clayton to please step up and introduce herself to our city.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Excuse me. I'm Rochelle Clayton, and I'm so sorry, very excited to be here tonight. Can't... Thank you.
Somebody give her some honor.
Tex, are you in the queue, or did I forget you?
Very embarrassing. I apologize. Can't express enough gratitude for this opportunity. I'm excited to serve the mayor and city council, but more importantly, the community. I have had strong ties to this community my entire life. And I am very excited to serve the community and the council and work alongside the great team in Barstow. So I'm very, very thrilled and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. And questions of staff or Ms. Clayton? Counselmember Williams.
Do you have any ties to this Barstow area?
I do. My family has lived here my whole life.
So you understand our community, the residents, and the issues inside of our city?
Yes, I do. I am a former resident and a long time... Again, my family has been part of this community my whole life.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate it, and you probably got choked up on my yellow shirt, so...
All right. I see no one else requesting to speak at this time. I'll ask for a first and second, and we'll go into discussion.
I would like to motion to approve Ms. Clayton as our new city manager as presented.
And I would like to second that.
I have a first by Mayor Pro Tem Rose and a second by Counselmember Hernandez, and we'll go into discussion. Counsel... Mayor Pro Tem Rose.
Thank you. So the discussion would be, first and foremost, that we had a very robust interview process. And I am very excited of our selection. I do want to say that we had amazing candidates that applied for this city manager's position. But Ms. Clayton rose to the top, and I'm excited that if this council approves this contract tonight, that we will have somebody that's not only tied to our community, but will be vested in this community. And I think that that's right away, that's... She's already going to be hitting the ground running because she understands our community. She understands where we have been and where we should be. So I'm excited in anticipation that she... On March 10, that Ms. Clayton will take the helm and move the city forward. I also want to say that when we go into closed session, personnel items cannot be discussed. We have them listed. And to say that we finally made a decision, we made a decision, but then there's the process of negotiations with the candidate on the agreement. It takes time. And so for us, for, you know, we made the decision, and when both parties agreed to what we have in front of us, that's when we can actually put it on the agenda and move forward. So there was no delay. It's just a process. It takes time. And as far as having two committees, we did have two committees, but I don't think this council is privy to say who was on that, on the committee, period, because those... That process was confidential, and I don't think that we should be commenting on any of that process, other than we have a successor name coming forward, and hopefully this council will approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rose. Counselmember Noble?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And I just want to kind of echo what Counselman Rose just said. However, there were a lot of candidates out there, very good candidates and stuff. But like Counselman Rose said, that, you know, when you start looking at the overall picture, you have to pick the best ones of the... Of those that were in the running. And she stood up, and she stood up good. And I appreciate that, because that's what we're going to need moving this council forward, moving this city forward, and all the things that we got coming up here in the near future. I believe that this council has done a tremendous job in picking a tremendous city manager that will do the things that we are asking her to do and the staff to do in order to move this city forward. And I look forward to this city moving forward with all the projects that we have on board and ready to go. So thank you. If this is approved tonight, I appreciate. I look forward to working with you. I know you're going to do things, and you're going to bring in your leadership to move this council forward and move this city in the best direction that is possible, basically because you're homegrown here in this city. And I know with that, you are going to be doing what you think is best for this city with the intention of supporting everyone that's even in this council, that's on TV land, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselmember Noble. Counselmember Hernandez.
Thank you. The most I appreciated was the commitment and the challenges, because in that I see we can be a team. And I think this council and our city manager needs to be a team, and that hasn't been the situation in the past. I am so looking forward, because I feel like I'm a native of Barstow, even though I came in '65. And it does make a difference when you understand the community and the challenges that our small town has. But I always see it as the little engine that could, and I say that to the other cities, and they'll tell you if you ever meet the other city managers and the council members. I appreciate you accepting and be willing to take that challenge. And I can say almost for the entire council that we will be supportive. And the city and members and the community has to understand, you may not always like the decisions that are made, but I can assure you that we, as a council, always look at it in the best interest of the city. And we can agree to disagree, as you saw, Counselman Williams and I. And issues stay here at the dais. They don't go anywhere else. And I am looking forward to a new beginning for our community, and thank you again.
Thank you, Counselmember Hernandez. This may have seemed as a long process. I was installed on December 16, and almost immediately, City Hall went dark. I immediately inquired as to when the applications close. I was told December 27. I immediately called that we start scheduling the interviews. I think from that time to this time, this was rather rapid. I'm sorry that you're kept in the dark, and I won't say it was by accident. It's intentional. We have to protect the names of the applicants. That information is never going to be disclosed to you, except for the one applicant that we've hired. The others still maintain their positions with where they are, and their employers have no right to know that they applied in Barstow. So it was, you were kept in the dark intentionally. A city that has three to four times the population of Barstow has three to four times the help, the workers that Barstow does. It's all relevant. And again, our interview committee was part of closed session. It was private, and any of them that want to come out and disclose that they participated are welcome to do so. I will not. With that, I will... We have first by, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem, is that correct? To approve the agenda item as presented. We had a second by Counselmember Hernandez, and I will call for the vote.
Motion to approve Ms. Rochelle Clayton as city manager passes 5-0.
Welcome aboard, Ms. Clayton.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I look forward to serving this community.
Okay, with that, we're going to go into general non-agenda public comment. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the governing board on matters not on the agenda and within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
We do. Our first speaker is Mr. Ted Weisma.
Welcome, Mr. Weisma.
Thank you. Although I haven't felt that welcome in recent comments, just two things. There's an upcoming meeting, I understand, for District 4 tomorrow, and I just think it's kind of sad that I never hear the other districts having their district meetings. I think every one of you should have one, really get a feel for the people within your area and what concerns them. I do have a concern that somebody's already indicated that they don't want to support a particular item in an area, and that really saddens me to have a predetermined decision on that. But hopefully, the people will come out for that meeting, and hopefully, the council people will listen to what they have to say. The other item is just a minor thing that no longer applies since we're not having the... the Berlin chili cook-off. However, the power down in that park, I noted, some of the outlets weren't working in the past, so, regardless of not having that event, hopefully you'll have the maintenance crew take a look at that. Thank you.
Our next-
Thank you, Mr. Weisma.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Hernandez.
Thank you. First of all, I'm glad you have a new city manager. Second of all, I hope she can do something with the financing, especially with explaining it to the general public, so they know what's going on. Seems like we're always in the dark when it comes to Measure Q. You had a meeting on Measure Q, council talked for three hours, the public got three minutes. We got to talk on all the items that you talked on during those three minutes. Whoopee. It's not right to have a meeting and not let the public participate in it, especially when you're discussing items like this. What troubled me the most was you're spending more money than you're taking in, and you're not justifying it. And you should. You can't tell me that proposed expenditures of 13 million and you're taking in 10. At that rate, the surplus we have in Measure Q is not going to last very long. You have to be also responsible to tell these people, you can't keep on taking money. Between the fire department and the police department, they take 70 cents out of every dollar that we get in Measure Q. And the city takes another 2% probably of, because you have the insurance and the cost allocation, which is over, over a million dollars. And right now, they're proposing to, to spend $7 million for PD. How can you keep on spending money like it's going out of style? We don't grow money. We don't have a money tree. I realize that we have money as a surplus, but that's a surplus. And if you keep on going the way you're going, you're going to drive the city broke. And I can't understand how you can say it's good to go this way. My main thing too is, on the contract that you proposed for the city manager, we've had two city managers that have exploited the expense account. I'd like to see you return it back to $25,000 instead of $75,000. Currently now, the city manager has an option to spend up to $75,000 without coming to the council and telling the council how they're spending it. And the last two city managers we have, they abused that, and nobody held them accountable. So I'm asking you to please consider changing it back, or at least if they're going to spend more, let the council know what they're spending, not go out and spend money, and then like Tex knows, he found an exp- they spent so much money for the parade. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Our next speaker is Ms. Teresa Tank.
Welcome, Mrs. Tank.
Thank you. Good evening, mayors, council and staff. Last meeting, Mr. Noble asked for the staff to make sure the residents knew who to call and have it disseminated across social media, city website, et cetera. Chief Arthur came out to talk to me during the brief recess about my concerns, and also said he would put something out on the BPT page. It's been two weeks, and I haven't seen any mention on either of the pages. Posting on social media or updating a website shouldn't take as much time as it does for the city, especially since social media allows a page to schedule posts. The city has posted 11 times in the last two weeks, but nothing about animal control. If that department needs help, perhaps the city should look into offering on-the-job training to students to get things done in a more timely manner. I also emailed Mr. Heldrich on 2/5, asking why the Humane Society is still listed on the city directory as the AC provider, when they haven't provided services for that since September 30th of 2023. As of today, it's still listed. I know I asked Maribel Hernandez in 2023 to update that, and it only seems like one section was updated, but not the directory part. Can we also get an update on where animal control stands? Will we have service starting on 3/11, or 3/1, excuse me? Also, an update on where the new kennels stand that the Humane Society is supposed to be building, and when they may be completed, which would come around to how much the animal control officer can start bringing in and making sure that all animals are off the ground, off of the dirt that they are currently in. Mayor, in December, you asked at least one council member, preferably two, to be present at the meetings with the city and the Humane Society, since you are responsible as a council. Is that being done? And will there be any updates to residents moving forward from the council? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tank.
Our next speaker is Ms. Rose Beersher.
Welcome, Ms. Beersher.
Thank you. So, very exciting times for Barstow. Fabulous council, and now an incredible city manager. Looking forward to it. Even though I live in Newberry Springs, I'm still heavily invested in Barstow. So I just want to address, about a month ago, I brought up the Prepare California Jump Start Grant. And thank you, Mr. Heldrich, for corresponding with me and getting a little more understanding. It is a $732,000 reimbursable grant that was awarded from Cal OES, and it was awarded about the time that we got the great news about BNSF under Willie. And so it's been about two and a half years, I believe. And it kind of got lost, I don't know, but I've been following it very closely because I was on the boost team that, that people that came from Sacramento that helped wrote the grant and got it awarded with Domingo. So it was, the grant was written for a contract chief resilience officer that would allow the city to provide focused attention on discovering gaps in your current planning efforts, develop new plans, and seek grant opportunities. There's actually a deliverable for a grant writer, so that Barstow can prepare for anticipated hazards, adapt to changing climate conditions, and build infrastructure that will help Barstow recover more rapidly, especially the underserved community members. So, and a climate action plan is so much more than disaster response or fire mitigation, includes several other things. I just feel, we flew an RFP, there was nobody that was qual- or even responded. But now that we have a professional city manager coming in with a, probably with 30 years' experience, a network that is unbelievable, that we could revisit this, because I was told that it was going to be hiring fire staff. And I feel with her level of expertise, we could write a climate resilient plan. There is a climate bond that is getting ready to roll out for $10 billion, so it'd be in our best interest to get this climate resilient plan written, fly an RFP, get a professional in here to write that plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Beersher.
Our next speaker is Mr. Brandon O'Brien.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members and entire Barstow community. My name is Brandon O'Brien. As a follow-on from last city council meeting, I represent the California Route 66 Museum Organization, and thank you again for allowing us to participate with the crown jewel at Harvey House in reopening the Mother Road Museum. Again, I just wanted to re-announce that the grand opening is scheduled for March 22nd, it's coming up. And we, so far today, just really appreciate all the guidance that the city has given us. We'll have a couple of press releases going out. I would love to partner with the city, and in light of the conversation earlier, the cook-off is an amazing event, and we'd like to partner with the city and, you know, kind of learn from some of the things that they've done in the past, in 19 years. And we'd really like to build awareness for the Route 66 Museum. We have the Centennial coming up, I said, next year. We're anticipating huge amounts of tourism. We have a lot of things planned, and with reopening the Route 66 Museum, when the previous museum left, their, the cupboards were bare. So if there's any community members that would like to donate, show, or present some items, we, we're open arms. The River Valley Museum, Mojave Museum, they've donated quite a few things already, and we're just open arms with any type of donations that could help, or even on loan. The ribbon-cutting event is going to be pretty, pretty fun. It's going to be a fun event that, starting at 10 o'clock, we're going to have some antique vintage cars, we're going to have some music, we're going to have food. Really want the city and community to participate. And on a side note, I've been to many, many city council meetings across different cities, and I got to say, your city council meetings are full of, they're very impactful. And I've done a lot of research on the city before, working with the city now, and I echo some of the comments. There's some huge, amazing things that are going to happen here, and I'm looking forward to being a part of it. And I also, congratulations, new city manager Clayton. Excellent. Looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Our next speaker is Ms. Marshall Weisma.
Welcome, Mrs. Weisma.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for you, and it's been over one year since the four-day work week began. We were promised an update of it. Of course, that was by the previous council mayor. Anyway, I would like to know, has there been any advantage to this four-day plan? Has it been documented? Has there been less call-in sick days, taking off? Has there been many downtime? How is your productivity? And basically, has it cut down on any overtime working four weeks? And have you asked and put out the survey that we were promised from the last mayor? I will tell you, it's no. Okay, right on to another problem, and I think it should be rectified, and I believe Mr. Williams has been doing a good job about it. This weekend, wind, high wind, no problem. The trees were cut approximately two months ago in Dana Park, but last weekend, during the breezy day, crap all over, looked like a windstorm. Well, we were told at the last council meeting, we were not short. We had plenty of people that would take care of our parks. What a lie. I mean, I saw it myself. I saw it in Mr. Williams's video. We drove up there, and yes, you could hide up to your knees in some of the weeds. The weeds had not been done, but it was even better. You walk around, you go across the crappy building that's been up there. Finally, the people that own the building, or were dedicated the building in their loved one's name, had the sense to take down L. Virgil's name. Well, that building, sadly to say, is probably gone, but behind that, how does this happen? Railroad ties, the little things that you stop your car in the parking lot, the cement blocks. Well, I'll tell you, Mr. Williams made a quick call, and I know he did it. He called, and he's on it. Let's take care of our park. The problem was, we couldn't figure out by the crappy maps we had and the way they were changed, who's district owned it, one, two, or four. Well, they finally decided tonight, when we came here, it belongs to Mr. Williams, because Mr. Williams is up there taking care of the park. It's a beautiful park. All of you've been to Dana Park. It really needs to be cleaned up, and it should not be trashed this bad. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for your videos, your dedication to the parks, and everybody getting bored, because you have parks on your side. Do not let them go in disrepair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weisma.
And our last speaker is Mr. Jim Brown.
Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Jim Brown, Barstow. I just want to commend y'all for making a choice for a new city manager, and she gonna have her hands full. And, but to me, it's like a breath of fresh air. And, and you need to, she need to look into the four-day work week that you have, and look at that, because Barstow is going to start taking off, and you're going to need five days a week instead of four days a week. The four days a week came because Cody Thompson said that he wanted a four-day work week, and it was brought up here to the city manager. And it was, you know, and they accepted it. Now, Monday night, going to Tuesday, Cody came up here and talked about, they wanted it because they wanted a football, Monday Night Football. And so, and now it's taking place, you know, because it was supposed to go to, to Rules and Policy. They did talk about that at the council meeting. I remember that. And it was supposed to go to Rules and Policy, and Barbara Rose and Cody said, just bring it to the Rules and Policy, and it never got done. So this is why I said it's for the football, Monday Night Football, and just open up, just bring the business back to Barstow for Friday, so the people can come in and do their business, instead of just, you know, because y'all can, if you open it up on Fridays, you can talk about it on Friday and get the, put the agenda out Thursday, like you've been doing, and Fridays, they can, you can come in and take a look at it. You know, so the, the staff, that's, that's all it was for. It was just for the, the top brass to have the, the days off, the fourth, you know, that Friday off. But your other workers are still working. They not, they don't have it. They don't have the four-day work week, just the upper brass does.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
That is all the comment we have.
Thank you. With that, we'll go into council committee reports. Councilmember Hernandez, any reports on committees?
Yes, just one. I attended on February 6th, the Southern California Association of Governments, and basically, the conversation was about the wildfires and how it affects all the communities. So the separate, I'm on the environmental community, and we will be working on that, because when the wildfires occur, it affects all the communities around them, because you lose housing, then they spread out. Where do they go? And then the loss of low-cost housing. And what I found was interesting, I wasn't aware of it, that California has insurance called California Fair Plan Association, and guess what? We're going to be paying for that. It's for the individuals that cannot get- It's for the individuals that cannot get house insurance. And so now, the insurance have decided that they're going to, it's gonna cost billions, and it's gonna be shared down. And we, as homeowners who have property insurance, are going to have to pay at one time. And we don't know yet what time, that amount of that fee is going to be. And so that about covers it. But it was interesting that the speakers on the subject matter was Dr. Lucy Jones, founder of the Chief Scientist. She's usually the one that tells us about earthquakes. Amy Bodek, County of Los Angeles Department of Regional Planning. Steve Soboroff, you've seen him on the TV with the mayor, Bass Recovery Officer, City of Los Angeles, and Noon Tareke, Executive Director of Program for California Forward. So as information comes down and it's going to affect Barstow, I would give you further information. And that was it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilman Noble, any committee reports?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple. Just, I wasn't able to attend the Military Affairs meeting on 11th of March. You can speak on that. We did have the VVT council meeting this morning, and a young lady by the name of Jasmine Davis, who's a role supervisor for VVTA, was Employee of the Month. And we recognized her here this morning at the city council. And she's one of the workers that work at the VVT office here on, in Barstow. And we wanted to make sure that we recognize her for the tremendous work that she does here in Barstow, but also for VVTA and so forth. Our next council meeting for VVTA will be on the 17th of March, and the next Military Affairs meeting will be on the 11th of March. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Noble. Councilmember Williams? Mayor Pro Tem Rose?
Thank you, Mayor. So I would like to report out on the Homeward Bound Committee. We met on February 13th. It's always 5:00 PM here in the council chambers. I'm really, really pleased to say that we are a dynamic committee. I'm also pleased to say that we did put applications out to anybody for the opportunity to become part of this committee. And with consultation on Councilwoman Williams, who is the co-chair for this committee, I am pleased to announce that our new committee members are Mr. Ron Beshears, Mr. Eugene Buditichi, and Ms. Vanessa Pack. Each and every one of these individuals bring a wealth of compassion and heart for what they do for the community, and a wealth of knowledge. They just bring a lot of knowledge, and I'm so excited for this new team. I also want to say that I have an update for the New Life Fellowship. And I want to thank Ms. Roche Beshears for, Beshear for providing this. So I would like to say that the New Life Fellowship, Mr. Ron Beshear is again, partner, co-owner with Ms. Beshear in this venture. But I want to say that the New Life Fellowship continues to feed seventy-five to one hundred hot meals to our neighbors in need every Tuesday evening from seven, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Their HHP four grant has been reviewed and signed, and will go before the Board of Supervisors for final signatures on February 25th, 2025. And that they also have onboarding for HMIS on 2/20/25, and can move forward after board approval. New, New Life Fellowship also submitted an emergency food and shelter program grant in the amount of $5,000, and they are currently working on a San Manuel proposal that's due March 5th. And I, again, I want to thank Ms. Beshears for providing this, so that I can report out. This is just a snippet of the amazing things that the Beshears do for our community, along with all the other nonprofits, that are part of this committee. And I'm also really happy to say that we did change our meetings from, and this is another change, but we did change our committee meetings from, from Monday, from Wednesday evening to Thursday, to allow the nonprofits, in particular the churches, to be able to participate in this committee. Because at the end of the day, when we meet in this chambers for this committee, you would be amazed, and I encourage everybody to attend, the nonprofits. And if we look at the calendar, and we have, the committee's actually working on a calendar, if you look at the calendar of any given month, there is probably every day of the week, every day of the month, that our nonprofits are giving back to our community. And I look forward to sharing that calendar in future meetings. I also look forward to inviting this committee to present before the council all the amazing things that they are doing. We are still looking for a homeless coordinator, and that will be a discussion with our new city manager. And that coordinator basically is just gonna be connecting the dots as a resource, so that our community has a place, a hub, that they can go to, to connect the dots on all the amazing things that our nonprofits are doing. I also want to say that the Point and Count was a success. Our mayor and Councilwoman Williams attended early that morning. That was the same, it, there was the same day that we were actually doing interviews, so they were able to make it here, 5:00 in the morning, I believe. There was twenty-nine volunteers. And the report for the Point and Count will come at the end of April. And so I want to, you know, thank the staff, and in particular, Ms. Mary Bell Hernandez, for coordinating this. It was another great event. I also want to report out that, that Sue, and she has been working with Love Laundry. And this committee, every month, we ask our committee members, and anybody that would like to donate, to bring something that we can give back. This month, we brought rolls of quarters, so that we could donate for the Love Laundry. And this, they helped thirty-one homeless people with a hundred and thirty-four loads of laundry. So I just want to continue this love to move forward. I'm always welcoming, if you have anything, bring a, bring a roll of quarters to City Hall, we'll make sure it gets distributed to the Love Laundry. And also, on Wednesdays, the Church of Christ does showers for the homeless, and it's at 6:00 PM, and they're always asking for volunteers. This month, at the next meeting, or, our next meeting is March 13th, 5:00 PM, that's a Thursday, here in the chamber, chamber, in the chambers, we're asking for donations for men's and women's undergarments. This will help those that are helping shower, those, those individuals. This will help provide these resources that they desperately need, that they desperately need, so. So I encourage, if you find it in your hearts to give us something, please keep these items in mind. And the next Rules and Policy meeting will be February 25th, 5:00 PM here in the council chambers. I look forward to that meeting, and encourage everybody to show up there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rose. For the record, I didn't make it to Point and Count until 5:30. Even that, early in the morning, I have a routine. I tried to shorten it, but I, it was tough. On February 5th, I attended the SBCTA. We voted on a couple of items involving a truck coming up the pass, and the Glen Helen grade separation. We also got an update on the five-year plan. I see that the next thing coming up for Barstow is Room Rock Road, so maybe we'll get an update in, in Street Committee, as where we're at in coordinating with county, hopefully, since we, after Agarita, we just own half that road, or one side of that road. They also said it goes to J. Avenue, so, and we stop at H. That's what the SBCTA agenda showed. And then same day, that afternoon, we had the Street Committee. So yeah, please bring that to Street Committee, we can see where we're at with that project. On February 7th, I attended the service for Jeff L. Eason, and presented the city's proclamation at the service to the family. On February 10th, I attended the Tippecop fundraiser at Chili's. On February 11th, Military Affairs, we got an update from all the military branches and the services that support the military, and just a lot of discussion going on about the functions that are coming up. The Veterans Day barbecue, the military mixer, those are still a ways off. We'll get those dates to the council, as we do, we do like to see our council attend our military events. On February 13th, the SBCTA had a special meeting in the Metro Valley Study Session. And fortunately, one council member from Hisperia could not make it to San Bernardino, so they set up a Zoom at the Hisperia City Hall. So I was able to make half the trip instead of the whole trip. I joined the Zoom in Hisperia. On February 13th, I attended the Barstow Junior High School Annual Safety Plan Review. Every school has a safety plan review, they've invited me to all of them. Looks like I'm gonna be able to make about half of them. But they, they show what they're, and our, our police department was there, our fire department was there. And I didn't know this, but it's good to see that they coordinate and let us know what their plan is. And that is everything. I just would like to put in on the Califair, California Fair Plan, that came about because the state has chased a lot of insurance agencies out of California. And the California Fair Plan only covers fire hazard. So you still have to get an insurance company cover you for theft and liability, and then you find yourself with two policies. So hopefully, the state can get that fixed someday, and we can get back to private-party insurance. There are homes that private-party insurance will not insure right now, and in that case, you have to go get the California Fair Plan. With that, we will go to the business of the council, and we will start with Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. I got a call of concerned citizen, and they were concerned about the senior center. They said that they had been served alcohol on 2/15. And my concern is, we have an agreement where we rent on the building, and the liability in, in those types of situations, and is, the, the person asked me, is that allowed? And they also reported that they had seen in the Barstow Blast that they were renting the seniors, put out that the senior center could be rented for birthdays and that. And my understanding is, under our agreement, that could not be done. So I would appreciate it if our city attorney can look into that, and, and please respond. The other comment I have is for Chief Arthur. I wanted to thank you regarding the Dollar Tree vandalism. They called to thank me, I said, no, I'm gonna thank him. They truly appreciated the officer coming out, and they were very complimentary of the whole process that had occurred, because, you know, I had made the mention to you, so I want you to, to thank the officer, and they appreciated it. The other thing is, I would like that we go back to introducing new employees that are hired by the city. We used to do that, and then we kind of stopped. And I've been around a long time, and there are a lot of employees I don't know.
I'll second you on that.
Okay, thank you. So, and I also like a second to have our city attorney look into that contract, and if need be, send them a letter, because I don't want us to be placed in a liability situation.
You got it.
Okay. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Noble?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have is, staff, can we relook at the, the website and get that up and running sooner than later? Okay? That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Noble. Councilmember Williams?
First of all, I want to make sure that the fourth district meeting is also with the third district as well. So me and the Mayor Pro Tem will be doing that tomorrow. I do believe the police chief's joining us, and the assistant city manager, intern city manager. To Ms. Tank, that's my, I'm gonna apologize to you, because that update's gonna come on Wednesday, what you were asking for. It was my fault for holding it back, but I thought we could do it. It's gonna be live. So if you can't make it, Virginia Brown's gonna be hosting it for us. But, you know, we will be talking about that. So that's, that's my fault, so I apologize for that. I should have told you that. I want to take a minute to thank you, chief, for going through fruit for this. Had all your officers there, I thought we learned quite a bit. But more importantly, I want the residents to understand, our police department has district officers in your district for a reason, to learn who you are, to understand your issues, but more importantly, to understand the crimes in those areas. It was a very smart move, and we just, I, I appreciate it. Because what that does is, it puts you a first-name base with your officer. And only that, first-name base with the residents. And he, he or she understands what's happening in that resident. So thank you for going out and doing that. As far as the parks, for staff, for, for our park and rec staff, amazing job they just did yesterday. You heard me on the video, you know, sometimes a little harsh, a little tough, but I tell you, when they do right, they, they deserve the credit. And they went way beyond fixing that park. It's, it's absolutely incredible. I was, I was very, very excited today. And two elderly ladies were with me, and they enjoyed theirselves too. But I gotta tell you, it's very important that we have our parks ready for our residents. And I gotta tell you, I take my hat off to the park and rec crew, and Tommy as well. If you could pass it on, I appreciate it. Again, we'll be live tomorrow down on Riverside Drive. I'm excited, we're gonna do a town hall meeting, it's gonna be pretty good, and everybody's gonna have their opportunities to update our community. But we need to do more updates. And the last thing I want to leave you with is, when, when we have things on the agenda, we have things that we're doing in closed session, there's only so much information we could put out. For those of you guys who think we're holding information back, I want to tell you, in the last thirty days, I think you've learned more about our city, more from our staff than you ever have before. That Measure Q meeting was unbelievable information. So we made a promise to you, I made a promise to you, and I'm gonna keep it. But to come up and tell us that we don't give you enough detail, we can only give you what we're allowed. That's what our city manager does, he keeps us under control. So we're giving you everything we can possibly give you, trust me on that one. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Mayor Pro Tem Rose?
Thank you, Mayor. So I would be remiss if I didn't thank our finance director, Ms. Sydney Harris. There's plenty of times, Ms. Harris, that I have, you know, asked questions and become, and sometimes come across as aggressive, and I apologize for that. But I do want to say that, you know, that you deserve a lot of praise because of what you do in finance. And is it an easy job? Absolutely not. Can I do it? Absolutely not. However, I was really impressed with your candor when you say that you were directed to do this, or directed to do that. And it makes a whole lot of sense. But I also want to say, the Measure Q workshop that, that you coordinated and that you put together, I really appreciate it, because I learned a lot that day, so thank you for that. I also wanted to say to the community that, you know, you have three minutes to speak. It was a workshop. There is a difference between a workshop and a town hall meeting. Moving into the town hall meeting, yes, that Councilman Williams and I will be hosting a town hall me, a meeting. Ms. Councilman Williams is gonna be leading this mostly, because it is, you know, his town hall meeting, he invited me. In future, I will be hosting a town hall meeting for dis- In future, I will be hosting a town hall meeting for District Three. And I will invite another council member and/or the mayor to join me. Or it could be also Councilwoman Williams. But I think that it's gonna be really important that we show that we're trying to show you that we're a team and that we're willing to work within each other's districts. Because basically, I belong to District Three because the state says so. That we have to have districts. But ultimately, every one of us, um, supports the city as a whole. So again, I want to reiterate, town hall meeting tomorrow, 6:00 PM. I haven't seen the agenda, so I'm, I'm not coming prepared. But what I am coming prepared with is being honest, candid, and transparent on whatever, whatever topics that we will be discussing tomorrow. The address is 1375 Bishop Nathaniel Jones driveway. This is the church on Riverside Drive. I look forward to it, and I welcome everybody to please come. I also want to say that in future, I would love to see council, coffee with council. Some kind of a small event that we would have coffee with council. And I don't know how that would be with the Brown Act, but it may have to, you know, if it's an event, we could all be present. But it most likely will just be two, coffee with council. And hopefully, we can just start showing our community that, you know what? We were voted in, and we, we are obligated to meet with our constituents and to hear their voices. I'm looking forward to stuff like that. Or a council corner, where we can go grab a corner on any city property and set up, you know, something so that you can come and ask us questions just to meet us. I do also want to say that, um, this is for Barstow Community College, but our congressman, Jay Openote, is gonna be here on Friday, 8:30 to, I believe it's 8:30 to 9, 8 o'clock to 9 o'clock, um, in the morning on Friday. And it's gonna be at the Performing Arts Center. So I do encourage everybody, if you want to meet our council, our congressman, Jay Openote, he's gonna be available during that time. Thank you, Barstow College, for throwing that, for, um, for preparing that. And I also look forward to the March 22nd, 22nd grand opening for the Route 66 Museum. I look forward to receiving the, um, the invite for that. And with that, Mayor, I conclude my business.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rose. A lot of you may not recall, but on the first council meeting on the 16th of December, I encouraged all council members to have town hall meetings in their district. And I told them, if invited, I will attend. I may swing by your event tomorrow. It will not be a Brown Act violation. You're not charging to get in. All public is welcome. And I will just be sitting in the back and listening. However, I, I have a late day at the office. So if I make it, it's gonna be well towards the end of your meeting. I sat down with our newly hired city manager today. And I just want to mention that, that we sat down and talked for over an hour. And what's amazing is a lot of what the public brought up in public comment today was discussed. I won't go through each one in detail. But we're recognizing a lot of the issues that you're recognizing. And a lot of these may have just been put on hold. As you know, we went from an interim city manager to an acting city manager and feeling best that maybe we just get a city manager in position to start tackling some of these issues. The Bureau of Land Management will be having a stakeholders' meeting tomorrow. Uh, it will be from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. Uh, there are several ways to attend. Uh, you can attend at their, um, office on Barstow Road, which is 2601 Barstow Road. Uh, you can attend by Zoom. And I understand staff is gonna post that on the website. And there's also a way to listen in by phone. Is that also posted on the website? Okay, they'll run it again tomorrow. And, uh, applications, grant applications are in for 2025. And they need to hear our input. As you know, we have, uh, some major off-highway vehicle areas here. So we need to be sure that we're getting that grant money to our area. So please participate. If you can't make it, go to the city website, get the Zoom link, and, uh, have your input on that meeting. Uh, with that, by consensus of the member, without objections, uh, this meeting will be adjourned at 10:29 PM. We are going to continue our closed session. And the report out of that closed session will be done on our next meeting on March 3rd, 2025. Thank you.